Okay, we have some additional seats up front? Nobody likes sitting in the front row. I know, it's not church. Trust me, it's not church. If I'm speaking, it's not church. Mr. Quagliano, we're trying to have a meeting. I'm just...
Yeah, giving me a hard time.
Yeah, I'm just giving you a hard time. Alright. Okay, I'd like to call to order our special meeting for Thursday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM. Can I roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi, Mr. Gentry, Mr. Drizell.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Alright, we do have a quorum, and you, we have a pledge of allegiance. So, what I'd like to do is change things up. We do have students here, so is, uh... Is this Hau Yu here? Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
There. Do you want... Are they all here? Good, let's do the pledge with them now.
Oh, there they all are.
Yeah. Hidden among the big people.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have some second graders here from McCaven Elementary School. We'll start with the pledge, and then I'll let them introduce themselves. Ready, friends? Alright, so everyone will... There's our right hand. You got it. Okay, you guys start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't they come up here, and they can introduce themselves separately on the microphone?
Okay, wait, come here.
Is that cool?
Yes, that... We just have a little something planned.
Oh, you gotta coordinate something there?
Oh, yes, we do.
I'll let you coordinate there first.
So when you go up there, you just put your nameplate on there.
Oh, you got nameplates, that's cool.
Sophia, go ahead. You guys can go around up there. Ally, smile.
Let's make sure I'm smiling.
Right this way, friends.
You can sit in the big chairs.
Evan, okay, go that way. Evan, this way, bud.
You guys are gonna run the meeting.
You can run the meeting. All three people are here today, they're in.
Yeah, get right in there. Hop off there.
Just you go... You could just talk normal into the microphone, okay? Yeah, I'll put that up for you. Sophie, right? Good job, Sophie.
There you go, you're the newborn president.
Alright. Come on up and take pictures if you want.
Mr. Drizell, here's your question.
Yep, we practiced. So we can have some responses.
That was the first thing I found. Did you find candy?
We've been doing this for two years, at least. Bringing the kids up here, giving them a chance to sit at the big chair. None of them, even the high schoolers, have never found our candy stash. You guys are good. You guys are very good, yes. So now that that's out, we are going to have to make it a vegetable stash. Yes. Alright. So hey, guys, how you doing? Yeah, well, thank you for coming out. Look at all these people that are here to see you. Does that make you nervous?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, no, no?
No, no, not at all.
You guys know the pledge, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, you're all second graders, so that means next year, you're gonna go to a new school building, right?
Yes.
So, what's your favorite memory about McCaven?
My favorite memory is once that we... It's hard. At the last day of school, we had a lot of fun in like kindergarten, you know? Kindergarten, first grade. I think kindergarten was the funnest time because it... I get to be like, and do a lot of stuff. It's very fun. Then, I like being a kindergartner because you just get to do all these things and stuff.
Everything I learned, I learned in kindergarten. What about you?
My first day of car rider. First day of car rider.
You introduce... You're introduced yourself and...
Yes, and you asked me a question.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Ah.
Yeah. And I said, "At home." Well, my first day of car rider was a couple days ago.
Here, let's hear what Joseph has to say. What was your favorite memory?
My favorite memory of McCaven was when we had the Christmas concert.
Christmas concert, ooh, those are good. Those are good. Jaden?
Um, the last day of school in first grade because it was kinda raining and we all panicked.
Like last night, huh? When it was raining so hard. Hannah?
Um, my memory was that, um, at McCaven that we had a... A, um, party in the hallway and we got to dance.
You got to dance in the hallway?
Yeah, we did.
That's awesome.
We're on the same elementary school.
Sophia?
Um, my favorite memory about second grade was yesterday because when it started raining outside, my whole class was panicking.
Yeah, it was a big storm yesterday. Ally, do you have a favorite memory? No? Okay, so, I'll start with you, Ally. What are you looking forward to in third grade? Are you excited? Are you nervous? Nervous? Yeah. Chase?
Well, actually... It was fun that we... Why do I keep forgetting stuff?
Alright, we'll come back to you. Anybody else? What are you looking forward to?
Um, the times math.
Ooh, multiplication. Excellent. Sophia?
I'm looking forward to having my brother's third grade teacher, Mrs. Byrd.
Oh, wow, very cool. Very cool. Anna?
Um, I'm looking forward to, um, having my sister's fourth grade teacher.
Oh, wow. Okay, that's cool. Joseph?
So, I hope when I get to Conley to have a good... To get to more division and more multiplication, subtraction, and more addition.
Okay. Ms. Massachusetts, can you make sure that happens? Alright, okay, good. Alright. And Evan?
What I'm looking forward to is division because usually, I can do less better than my sister. And when I win division, I can usually, um... I might be able to go faster than her in division.
Well, there you go. Competition, that's good. Okay, one more question, okay? So, what are you looking forward to this summer? Sophia?
Going swimming at Stingray Bay.
Stingray Bay, that's cool. Anna?
Going to the pool a lot.
A lot, yeah? Yeah, Joseph?
So, when I... When I go to Stingray Bay, I'm gonna go on those two big slides and go on the diving board.
Wow, okay. Braver than I am. Chase?
I'm gonna go to Stingray Bay and a lot of pools and do a lot of fun stuff, play with my friends, ride my go-kart, do a lot of cool stuff.
Very cool.
I'm going to... Colorado.
You're going to Colorado? I bet you're gonna go swimming, right? Jaden?
I'm gonna go to Florida to go on the Disney cruise.
Ooh, where's Jaden's parents? Can I go too? Alright, and Ally, what are you looking forward to for summer vacation? Going outside? Yeah, that's a good time. Well, hey, guys, thank you very much, and thank you parents for bringing them out. Give yourself a big round of applause, okay? Great job.
This Hau Yu?
When can we do...
Yes, Chase?
When can we do... When can we... When can we do the siding thing? That's what I...
Your chair, that's a great idea there. Alright. They're bringing it over here. Here, Ally.
Chase. You know, on the chair would've been better.
There you go, look at that. Alright. Make sure you smile for your parents. Awesome, thank you, guys.
I wanna take your name tag.
Okay, well, maybe next time, okay? Thank you very much. Hey, have fun at school tomorrow. Fridays are fun.
Are you gonna have this? Because I'm gonna be...
Thank you. Can you get your pictures?
Awesome, I'll get you a book.
Okay.
Uh, when the rest of them come in. Probably be in tomorrow.
Yeah, there you go.
For the next five minutes, really.
The first time, wow. We're not gonna be getting out or something, you know? That's what I'm thinking.
Well, remember the kids that we had cookies and milk and they...
Yeah.
They ate our cookies and milk.
Well, it was kinda out there. We're old people, we don't eat cookies and milk like that. Okay, so that takes us on to public comment for our special meeting. Do we have any public comment for our special meeting?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so then, um, the main point of this special meeting, um... I'll make a motion to, uh, approve and award the base bid and alternate bids A, B1, and B2 for pavement improvements to Abbey Paving Company in the amount of... Well, in the amount that's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. A little discussion here. Mr. Runkasik?
Uh, we had a nice turnout for the bidding. Uh, the low bidder, um, in fact, has a lot of experience, performed very well in our area. Um, and the prices were very competitive, as you see in the bid tally. We have no reason, uh, not to recommend Abbey Paving to be awarded the project. It is a substantial project. Um, at your places, I put a copy of a plan. And if you look at all the light gray areas on the satellite picture, um, that is where new asphalt and concrete islands and curves will be installed. And, uh, we're very pleased at what we understand from our traffic engineer will be some nice enhancements to flow over there at Reed Road campus.
Have we, um, worked with Abbey Paving before? The name seems familiar.
They have been bidding work for me for, uh, I'm gonna date myself here, about 28 years. Um, but I've never had an opportunity, they've never been low bid. Uh, they do, quote, specialize in schoolwork. They did $2 million worth of work at McCamry County College last summer. And did it in a tighter timeframe than our project, which is still a tight timeframe. Uh, and they've, according to HR Green, they've worked with them, done $25 million at College of DuPage in the last decade, so... They've been, uh, performing well for a long time.
And then the only other thing I see in the satellite, uh, rendering, it looks like that turnaround that I... I seem to have an issue with several months ago was kinda revised?
Well, what they did was, uh, the engineers rolled up their sleeves and, uh, there are some ways you can digitally model the turning radius of a bus, and they went into a little more detail, knowing this was gonna go forward. And they determined by just adding nine feet closer to Reed Road along the edge, they could satisfy the need of that turn, so... Rather than make a little, uh, half moon out there in the berm, we were only... We were able to get by with just a nine-foot addition, uh... Stretch of pavement there along the south edge.
Looks great. Everybody's happy. Any other questions? Okay, uh, can I have roll call then?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Drizell?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. The contract is awarded to Abbey. Alright, with that then, I'll make a motion to adjourn our special meeting at 6:18 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned to the special meeting. So with that, I'll go right into our committee of the hall meeting for Thursday, May 3rd at 6:19 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Drizell?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Okay, um, we already had our pledge of allegiance. Did they leave? We can do it again. Actually, um, the one young man said he had something else he wanted to share with us, though. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to academic spotlight. Mr. Zare?
Good evening. This evening, uh, before the committee of the hall started, uh, we held a little bit of a reception for our staff members who are achieving milestones, or tenure status, or retiring. So at this time, uh, we would like to recognize, uh, those teachers and employees who are reaching specific milestones. So, Ms. Lombard is going to assist me. As your name is called, if you could please, uh, come forward. Uh, we're gonna start off with the teachers who are obtaining tenure, uh, after this year. Uh, to obtain tenure, you need to complete four successful, continuous years of service at the full-time status as a teacher. So at this time, we are gonna recognize, uh, those teachers, and we will start with Huntley High School. Uh, first, Julie Achley. Jacqueline Avner. Will Benson. Tierney Brinkman. Zach Davinson. Lisa Dubek. Clayton Hendrickson. Christina Nowak. Matthew Pettyjohn. Kirsten Ryan. Lindsay Sarah. Paige Satuary. Brian Scott. Aaron Seitz. Lauren Teeter. And our last teacher at the high school, James Wallace. We're gonna move on to LaGee. Jennifer Bowie. Kylie Davy. Joanne Hines. Maggie Hoffman. Carl Eisenhardt. Jessica Keeler. And Michelle King. At Martin Elementary, Kylie Benja. And Benjamin Reebok. At Conley Elementary, Stephen Byrne. Stacy Hassels. Dana Turp. At Chesapeake Elementary, Lisa Ammer. Jody Mauer. Paige McConnell. And Emily Overly. At the Early Childhood Center, Laura Cubitz. And Kristen Manning. At Marlowe, Amanda Bolt. Lisa Montanisi. Sarah Moran. Ashley Mots and Angela Naraki. From Heinemann, Courtney Fulton. And one of our district-wide employees, Jill Kelly. If we could get everyone who's obtaining tenure status this year, a round of applause. The next attachment that's in the agenda packet, and you will notice that we are recognizing those who have reached a certain years of service. And the first couple pages there, I just want to describe.
Before you move on, I just wanted to say thank you to those teachers that have made tenure for your successful service for four more years. I know it's not necessarily an easy thing to get, and we really do appreciate it. So thank you very, very much.
In that next attachment there, you're going to see the milestones. Not everyone is going to be here this evening. We do something unique with some of these milestones. So the first list you have there are the five years of service. We actually hand those awards out to the principals, and the principals recognize those individuals at their faculty meetings. For the 10 years of service, the cabinet will be starting their tour next week and continuing through May. And we will go to teachers' classrooms and individuals' classrooms or their work area to recognize them. So always a fun time to go into the classroom and do that in front of the kids. And we will also be doing that for individuals who have reached 15 years experience. So as you can see in front of you, we have quite a large list for those. So now, we're going to move on to individuals that were invited here tonight. And we're going to start with our 20 years of service. So those who are completing their 20th year here in Huntley 158, Ms. Lombard has a certificate and also an additional gift for them. So first is Cynthia Botterman. Some of our employees were unable to be here tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and recognize them. Janet Burkhalter. Matthew Elder. Ryan Frederick. Tom George. Chad Hanson. Pam Jorgensen for 20 years of service. Well, she told me they do everything together, so I'm just, I'm going to skip here in alphabetical order and call up Emily Moore. That was a curveball from Ms. Lombard, too, because those are in order. You've got to keep her on her toes. Next up is Sean Karns. I apologize, she goes by Chris. Valerie Lindquist. Deborah McGowan. Karen Meyer. Elizabeth Newbauer. Julie Strauss. Karen Suarez. Jennifer Wilkinson.
You know, I've taught over 500 people in this community with this.
And our final person to recognize for 20 years of service is Robin Yocas. For those of you who are here who are getting recognized for 20 years of service, we're going to do a picture real quick with the Board of Education. So if you could come up for 20 years of service, we'll do that right now, Dan.
You want to sit in the big chairs? Do you like Reese's? Are you feeling cranky? I got a Snickers bar.
You mean vegetables?
A Snickers vegetable bar, yes. Safety first.
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Wilkinson? Hold on a second. I know the tenure people are escaping. We're calling you out. We're going to do a picture with the tenure teachers real quick, so we include everybody. So the tenure teachers could come up and get a picture with the board. Thank you. The next group we have to recognize is for 25 years of service. The first person on our list is Scott Ittingh. And if we could all turn and wave, Scott is watching from San Francisco. Congratulations, Mr. Ittingh. At least he says he is. We'll see. We'll see now.
Go White Sox.
Diane Jewell. And Deborah Rubin. Now, we're going to move into those individuals who are retiring this year. And we have building administrators who are going to come up and say a few words about the people who are in their building. So our first... So our first person we're going to recognize from the Early Childhood Center, she's also on her 15 years, so she's going to be receiving a few items this evening. And Cheryl's going to be coming up to say a few words is Kelly Lobber.
Anybody got a cart that can help? You won the lottery.
Good thing your husband came. All right, well, Kelly has been teaching in the Early Childhood Center for 15 years. And prior to that, she was teaching in a variety of places. She was in Naperville, Wisconsin. Her heart is Wisconsin. She's a Green Bay Packer fan. I'll let that go, it's all right. But she's been a loyal employee and teacher in the district for those 15 years. She's so dedicated. She's always been willing to try new challenges, help anybody out that needed it. If I needed something, she would volunteer. She was always the first one to step up and help anybody that needed it. And when I came to the program five years ago, being in the district for 15 years prior to that, it was all elementary. So when I went to the Early Childhood Center, it was a completely different world. Kelly, when I got there, I realized, you know, she was definitely kind of like the mother of the group. They all, she was kind of the teacher leader. Everybody went to her, respected her, kind of looked at her to take care of them. And when a new administrator was coming in, I know it was kind of scary for all them, but we connected right away. She's always been supportive and would be there, give her, you know, expert advice. And throughout the years, you know, the relationship has changed, but it's just grown so much to, you know, again, she just steps up and helps out anybody that needs it. So I know I speak for everybody in our program and all of the kids that she has taught throughout the years in the Early Childhood Center that we're going to miss her very much. You know, one of the biggest things I'll miss is every night when I'm working, you know, for a long time, I think I'm going to be the last one leaving. And I almost always see Kelly's car there. Even though, you know, you think of the new teachers, they're the ones that are there, staying late. But Kelly's been teaching for 15 years, and she's still there, dedicated, and will stay until she gets done what she feels she needs to get done. So you will be very, very much missed for all of your wonderful years.
Thank you, Cheryl. Our next person we're going to recognize also has 25 years of service with us. And she's retiring this year. Karen Rowe and Rhonda will be coming up to say a few words out for her.
All right, I'm here to talk about Karen Rowe, and this will also double as history of District 158. So Karen began her teaching career in Georgia. She was teaching first grade. And suddenly, her husband was transferred to Illinois. And she arrived and took a long-term position teaching, what grade? Third grade in Crystal Lake as a long-term sub. She was hired here in 1993 by Kelly Baird, who here remembers Kelly Baird. Three people in the room, maybe two. Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, Scott remembers, too. Yeah. Let's see, let's see. Oh, yeah, and her classroom was right near the smoking side of the teacher's lounge. So that was extra special. We both remember those days when the door would open, the smoke would come billowing out into the hallway. It was just extra special. But, yeah, that was part of our history. As we all now know now, and it was Huntley Elementary School at the time. And Huntley Elementary School no longer exists. And luckily, smoking has been banned, so we cannot smoke in the classrooms anymore or in the school. The next few years, we built a new high school. Huntley Elementary became North. The old Huntley High School became South. We added many mobile classrooms. Karen was lucky enough to not have to teach in the mobile, although it was air-conditioned, that was one of the benefits. Then in 2000, Chesapeake and Leggie Elementary's opened. And Karen was the AP at Chesapeake Elementary. While she was at Chesapeake for 14 years, she worked with many different administrators. She worked with Janine Hansel, who was the very first principal at Chesapeake Elementary. She also worked with Chuck Lamb and Jen Zias. She also mentored several of the Chesapeake-Martin Shared AP Position administrators. Let's see, we had Meg Schnorr, Barbie Rothbauer, Michelle George, Kathy Schaaf, and Claudia Boswell. While at Chesapeake, Karen formed close relationships and a positive rapport with staff members. Some of her favorite memories during her time at Chesapeake are of the family nights that they had. They always had a really well-attended, fun family nights, mostly reading nights. And then the times that May Chesapeake herself actually came to either attend those special events. Sometimes she would just come and hang out at the school, just to be with the kids, walk up and down the hallway. She was very proud of her school. And those were some of the memories that Karen shared with me. Then, in 2014, Karen came to join me at Conley. I was excited, I was thrilled. I'm going to guess that Karen was not, but that's okay. It all happened, she yanked out of her, you know, school with the little guys and ended up with our larger elementary school children. But it really worked out well. I had worked with Karen once before, sort of, back when Martin wasn't open yet. We needed a place for our third and fourth graders. And so the third and fourth graders were at Chesapeake for a year or two. I think it was just a year. And Karen was really the one who helped us when we needed help, and she really made us feel welcome in that building, which we really appreciated for many reasons, those of you who remember some of that history. So when I, when she was coming over, I knew we would make a great team. And we really did, I was right. We had made a great team. Karen is a talented administrator and a compassionate person with a great sense of humor. She has made a positive impact on the lives of thousands of District 158 students' families. Filling your shoes is going to be no easy task, and I really mean that. I am grateful that we had the opportunity to work together, and you will be missed.
As we continue on with our retirees, our next retiree on the list is Linda Albert. And Rita Castens will be speaking.
Hello. I have Linda Albert here with us today. She is one of the happiest people I've ever met. Coming in the building every day, she's down and she does our morning duty, so the kids get to start their day with her bright smile and her having kind words to share with them every day. And it's really nice to start your day with such a positive person. Linda started teaching in 1980 and has worked at Marlowe for the last 18 years, along with working in District 158. Linda taught 22 years at a community college, eight years at the high school level, and three years in a parochial school. At Marlowe, Linda has been part of our exploratory team as our computer teacher. Some of her other activities, she's been on the Marlowe Expo, as well as ran a tech club for the kids. This year, Linda will get to do her favorite thing on the last day of school. Every day on the last day of school, we have a tradition of all the staff members go outside and wave the kids off on their last day on the buses. Linda, we thank you for your time, dedication, and selfless work to the students and the community of 158. We wish you all the happiness during your retirement. And I know I will miss seeing your smiling face every day when I walk in. So thank you. The next person I will be calling up is Mary Forster. Mary has worked in the field of education for 25 years, which I'm only about nine years in. And I applaud you for that. You are, you know, that's a very long time to be here and with our district and working with our students. She has taught all three grid levels at Marlowe in either social studies or literacy. And one year, she even taught both subjects at the same time, so.
Two different grade levels.
At two different grade levels. So quite the challenge. I'm sure planning was the only thing you had time for. So we appreciate you always being flexible. Mary's always willing to do what it takes to help out, and that's just one of the examples that you can see. She has also done a phenomenal job taking over our plays, putting on some fantastic productions, bar none. I've never really been into theater, but being at Marlowe, between the plays and the musicals, they are absolutely phenomenal. So we appreciate all the hard work she has there. You know, she's made a lot of great connections with those students who come back and check in with her. And you can just see what a big impact she's had on so many students in our district. And we are very lucky to have had you for the last 16 years. And, you know, all of your students for the last 25 years are very lucky. of your students for the last twenty-five years are very lucky to have you. So thank you again for your service, and you will be very much missed. We have one last staff member that is retiring this year, Barb Hoffman. She was unable to be here tonight. She moved over to Marlo when we first got our self-contained program. She's helped students one-on-one. You know, it's really nice to see her interact with those kids and really make their experience a positive one at Marlo. She's always out and about in the building, always see her with a smile on her face, so she will be missed as well. She is going into retirement looking for nice weather and traveling, and with the spring we've had, I hope she finds that nice weather, so. But thank you for having us, and thank you again to all of our employees.
Rita almost took my list, that would have got interesting really fast. Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Zias to come up. She's going to be recognizing a couple of her employees, and the first one is going to be Deborah Fuca.
Okay, so Deb Fuca. Deb Fuca has been in education for twenty years, nineteen years have been in District 158. We definitely will miss Deb at Chesapeake. She's extremely helpful to the team and the building. She gives us words of wisdom every day, steps up to help out when needed, dedicated, and loves all her students. Deb's will also miss her students every day. She says, "My students are my number-one priority." She does say that all the time.
You do.
The wonderful people she has come to love as her second family, she will miss over at Chesapeake. And one of the things we will miss a lot about Deb is her kids' talk. She sends us some emails throughout the day sometimes, and we don't get them, we miss her. She talks about kid talk, and we always say teachers can write a book, and Deb really could write a book. She sends us one, and I'll leave you guys with one where she said, her funniest one, now you know why I asked for the email. The funny one was, "When I turned fifty, one of the kids asked me how old I was," which I always tell them. "One little guy got out his eyes as big as saucers and said, 'Do you know what? My grandparents are fifty-four, and they're still alive.'" I knew then I still had some good years left. We'll miss you, Deb. Our next retiree, Bonnie Smith. Bonnie, Bonnie's been teaching for twenty-nine years with her last, with her thirteen years being here in D-158. She is excited to spend more time with her family, especially her nine-year-old granddaughter. She's really hoping that she gets the time to volunteer at her school. Is she in Woodstock?
She's in Crystal Lake.
In Crystal Lake, so close by. Her family's all close by. We're going to miss Bonnie at Chesapeake. Her warm, loving, patient, and kind personality will be greatly missed. Bonnie is one of our self-contained strategy education teachers working with students, and every day she's taught me so much in, with students with special needs and being in the classroom with her. She's really a charm, and we really will miss her. Her students and family are her top priority every day, and Bonnie's going to miss the wonderful staff at Chesapeake. She's not sure yet. We've asked her, "What are you going to do? Are you going somewhere warm, somewhere fun?" Right now, she likes looking at houses on Zillow and looking at Tennessee, but her family is close by, so wants to stay close to her family. Bonnie, we love you and we'll miss you.
Thanks, Jen. The next employee we're going to recognize for retirement, and Ms. Lombard is going to be speaking in place of Mr. Eddings this evening. We'd like to welcome up Sharon Lackey.
All right, Sharon, we're going to Kleenex so that neither of us cry, because when you're prepared, it doesn't happen. So when I found out that Mr. Eddings was going to be at a conference today, while San Francisco is my favorite city, he did ask me to read what he had written about Sharon, but because Sharon and I did get to work together, I was super excited to be able to recognize and honor you, Sharon, and I would much rather be here than there. So. Sharon has been a dedicated employee for District 158 for twenty-one years. She served as a team leader in the cafeteria before she moved into her position in the office. What I found out tonight was that Sharon had started here, I had no idea that. She was just a natural when I became an assistant principal in the office at Leggie. She, what I found out again tonight, was that she was asked by the principal who was opening that building to come with her and open Leggie. And when I had the opportunity to move to McCabean, that's the exact same thing that I did, I asked Sharon to come to McCabean and open that building with us because of the type of employee she was. So when I found out that that has happened twice, I don't know, I know we have many employees that work in our district who've worked in various buildings, but I don't know how many of them had that opportunity to open two buildings, and I think that speaks volumes for your work ethic. Prior coming to District 158, Sharon was a registered dietitian technician at Lutheran General Hospital for eighteen years. It was obvious that Sharon used what she learned about TLC when she greets her visitors as they enter Leggie. Her smile is one that welcomes everyone. And I can honestly say, I've never seen you having one of those days. While I know we all have them, you've never expressed that out to anyone. Sharon has lots of fond memories about working at Leggie. Some of her most memorable wands are dressing up in costumes such as Batgirl, Robin, a hula dancer, a gondola driver, Buddy the Elf, and the role of the secret deliverer for Santa to kindergarten and first-grade students. Both of her children attended school here and graduated from Huntley High School. She often speaks about fond memories of their time in our schools. Sharon said one of the most unique things about working at Leggie is that she can't think of another job where she could ride a tricycle and drive the Batmobile up and down the hallways. Sharon will miss all the relationships she's built over the years with her students, staff, and parents. One of her favorite rewards of the job were the handmade gifts and cards she would receive from the children at Leggie. Recently, Sharon celebrated a big birthday, and the office and hallways were decorated with birthday greetings from our colleagues and the students. I find it very fitting that Sharon and Bob are moving to Florida and will be living on Lake Huntley in a town of about two thousand people, similar to when they moved to Huntley, Illinois. And I know that people will quickly know that Bob and Sharon are very, very special people. We know that Sharon looks forward to relaxing by the pool in a warmer climate and traveling with her husband, Bob, and we all may be a little bit jealous of her next journey, but we know that no matter, no one has earned this right more than she has to experience sun, fun, and relaxation in life. Sharon, your love by many. I'm going to cry, and these are Scots words, and I'm still crying. And we will all miss you terribly. You'll have a special place in our Leggie and District 158 families. Best of luck in your new adventures, and may your travels be safe. And while I know that we're going to have a new person sitting in your seat come August, no one will be able to take the place of you, Sharon. You're truly a one-of-a-kind, special person. You're more than a colleague, and you've become like family to me.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. Unable to be with us tonight, but retiring, is Charles Mallett. We're going to move on here. Mr. Litchfield is going to be recognizing a couple of his employees. The first one is going to be Maria Orozco.
They want to come up together.
Also Alexandra Spentos.
Maria and Alexandra, also known as Yaya, both work in the Heinemann Kitchen, and they have been together in Huntley 158 together for seventeen years each, so they wanted to come up together to be recognized. We're already starting a dry run of Maria being gone with this injury. It's been tough on day one. Yaya is Greek, is Greek for grandma, and that is one of the things that she's looking forward to in retirement, is spending more time with grandchildren. Yaya's work ethics in the Heinemann Kitchen are like none other at the age of seventy. She just turned seventy on yesterday, May 2nd. Yaya treats our middle school students like you would expect any grandmother would. She is patient, she is kind, and in the back kitchen, she can run circles around any other younger worker that steps into that kitchen. Yaya is famous for soups, cookies, pizza, shish kebab, and today she rolled out a spicy hummus that almost knocked me on my feet. Well, I was doing the interview, she tricked me into eating it, and then I needed something to follow it up with. She started at the high school, she's been at Heinemann ever since it opened. She's got family in the area that has restaurants, DeAndre's and Hobnob and other restaurants, so she might get pulled into that. She's traveling to London, Greece, and spending time with her grandchildren. Yaya, thank you for seventeen wonderful years. Maria is your definition of team player. She is known as the queen of sandwiches. She does the sandwich part of the catering orders. She is, she worked twelve years in the Chris Lake South Kitchen before coming to Huntley High School, and then opened up Heinemann Middle School Kitchen. She plans on traveling to Texas and Mexico and spending time with her grandchildren. She has a daughter getting married this summer, and we're hoping she will be back for some subbing opportunities. Maria is a wonderful server, very patient with the kids when they're asking her very random questions about food orders, and she will be missed desperately in the kitchen. Maria, thank you for seventeen years.
Well, we're going to want a picture with all the retirees too, so, yeah, that's a good idea.
We have made it to the end of our list, and the last individual we're going to recognize tonight that is going to be retiring on June 30th, and Mr. Hawk is going to be speaking on this employee, Mr. Terry Ory.
If you can, if you've ever seen this quote, "As adults in the world, we have the God-given responsibility to love, lead, and inspire all children." Terry Ory puts this in the bottom of every one of his emails and all of his memos. I had forgotten what kind of family environment District 158 is. Terry Ory is the definitely emphasis of the family. His core values related to faith, integrity, and leadership, and doing the right thing for kids continues throughout everything he does. If I asked, every one of you would likely pick up the mic and give a Terry Ory story. But fortunately, Adam asked if I would speak on his behalf, and so I'm going to tell you one of my favorite Terry Ory stories that goes back to the year 2002. I've known Terry since 2000. As an educator, my wife and I both had gotten a doctorate in education, but we found ourselves with a situation in which we had a seventh-grade girl that was not responding well to school. Our intervention was to make a major change in her life. Part of that change was coming to Huntley. She came with me every day to Huntley, and I met with the principal at that time, Mr. Terry Ory, and he says, "Not a problem, we will take care of it." He put her in with Barb Gomez, who continues to sit with her at church every single Sunday. Terry's focus on family and doing the right thing for kids has never wavered. I have personal feelings related to that, and certainly, he has done that for us. When we look at our emphasis within this district of personalized learning, I only have to look at Terry and how he works with every single kid and every single administrator and person in there. Terry, you are greatly going to be missed by this district. You are the foundation that this district was built on. Thank you so much for serving.
Thank you, Dr. Hawk. If we could get all of our retirees to come up in front here for one last picture here. Thank you.
What do you want us? I'm afraid if I go that way. Let me know, do an angle.
That concludes our recognition. Like I said, we will be out in the buildings this May, recognizing our other milestones. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to everybody, and thank you for your years of service. All right, we move on to public comment. I have one public comment here. Mr. Greve? Got a microphone?
Good evening, Jim Greve. I've been a resident in Huntley School District for forty years. I always thought Google was a marvelous tool. However, when I Googled "the largest snow-removal contractor in Northern Illinois," I couldn't find Tovar listed anywhere. find Tovar listed anywhere among them, as Mr. Hartman stated at your last board meeting. For someone who claims to take the high road, Mr. Hartman sure tried to undermine the credibility of others. Mr. Spitzer knew exactly what he was talking about when he referred to the McHenry County Snow and Ice Control Handbook for sidewalks and parking lots. If Mr. Hartman truly helped Mark DeVries write these handbooks, he would have known there were two handbooks, one for sidewalks and parking lots and one for roadways. I've known Mark DeVries personally since I moved to Huntley in 1978, when he was working for his father-in-law, Bill Choyne, at the Napa Auto Parts Store where the southernmost part of Club 47 is today. Shortly after that, Mark started working for Rutland Township as well. His expertise was running the road greater. In 1984, Mark started with McHenry County and has since retired and is now an application expert for Vassila. Mark will be the first to admit that McHenry County totally plagiarized these handbooks from Minnesota Snow and Ice Control Field Handbook Manual 2005-1. Government entities allow the sharing of this type of information with other government entities, so in reality, it really wasn't plagiarism. In the past, I have furnished this board, the Icing Application Right Guidelines for Parking Lots and Sidewalks, which is directly out of the Minnesota Snow and Ice Control Field Handbook Manual 2005-1, which is exactly the same as the guidelines that are in the McHenry County's handbooks which Mr. Spitzer was referring to. Mr. Spitzer stated that the district should take between 9 and 15 tons of salt, which is actually double to triple the handbook, what the handbook recommends. However, he was taking into account snowfall events in colder temperatures, which could be abated chemically rather than plowing first and then salting. Mr. Haas, who claims he was certified with McHenry County and took the salt training, like Mr. Hartman, who claims he wrote the handbook, did not realize that there are actually two different handbooks. I actually have those two different handbooks here. Mr. Spitzer had the one. Mr. Spitzer was clearly referring to the handbook for sidewalks and parking lot. Mr. Haas went on to state, if they were to apply 12 to 15 tons across the three campuses on any given event, Mr. Runcasic wouldn't be a very happy guy. I have also in my possession here, it's a proprietary document, it's a Tovar document, it's a route sheet, and on this route sheet, they tell you every property that they do, how many hours it takes to plow it, whether or not they shovel it, if they shovel it, how many hours it takes to shovel it, and the amount of salt that is used on that property. District 158, Huntley, Reed Road Campus, they use four tons of salt on. The other two schools, five ton a piece, that's 14 tons. Mr. Spitzer was brought on. I don't know what Mr. Haas was talking about. There is so much I need to say, however, I realize I'm running out of time. So in closing, I feel the need to address Eric Hartman's claim of successfully having a restraining order put on the gentleman that was in front of you two years ago. His statement is a malicious lie. Mr. Hartman is a salesman. If Tovars always took the high road, why do I have video surveillance proof of them billing for more salt than they are actually applying? Billing for truck time, which is supposed to be inclusive with the salt price, billing for plowing when all they're doing is salting, and billing for larger, more expensive equipment than is actually being used? Gentlemen, this is who you're choosing to work with. Thank you very much for your time. God bless.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Ory?
Okay. They take us on to revision and adoption of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove from the agenda? I would make a note that there is one slight change to item 10.2.2, that there's a rough of two minutes from May 17. Obviously, May 17, that'd be a curve yet, so that actually. If there are no changes to the agenda, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, very good. And curriculum?
Thank you. Item number 6.1, the McHenry County Regional Safe School Program. Mr. Ory?
Yes, thank you. Funding for the Regional Safe School Program is presently included in the 2019 state budget, so we are asking and recommending that the Board of Education and the Curriculum Instruction Committee approve our relationship in terms of working with the Regional Safe School, the Evergreen Academy, again, for next year.
Any questions, issues down here? No, good. All right, then we will move that on to the next board meeting. 6.2, student handbooks. Mr. Ory?
Yes, I gave you a few pages to read.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. But I tried to simplify it a little bit for you. As you know, and we talk about this every year, board policy states that our principals need to take the discipline rules and meet with their parent advisory committees and discuss this with them. Each one of our principals have done that, and they've given you the respective dates that each one of our principals did that. There were some minor changes this year, not a lot. There were some minor changes in the handbooks this year, and what I did to try to make things a little simpler is in front of each handbook, I just added the pages of the changes. Everything else is what you have approved in years past. So what we are asking, and the principals are asking, is that you approve the first couple pages of changes before each handbook at this meeting, and we take it to the council meeting for board approval.
Any question on handbook changes?
No issues here.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, we're all good there, then we'll move it to the regular meeting for a vote. 6.3, overnight trips projected for 2018-19. Dr. Schlichter?
Thank you. This is a standard item that we usually address at this time of the year. These are overnight trips that are inside the United States. Many of them are in-state, and we just bring them to the board as an information item, not like the out-of-the-United States field trips that we would do for approval. So this is just an information item with the list. As you see, just like every year, we list some athletic contests, some of those we're not sure if we'll end up getting to, but I do have to say that most of our teams are doing a pretty good job getting there, so we're going to keep on listing those on the list. And the rest of them are just a great set of opportunities for our students, so really just a chance to review and take any questions.
No. Just the comment that I do help, all these are attended.
We'll work on that. Make sure it happens.
That's right.
All right, if there's no questions, then we'll move that on to the board meeting, and then go to 6.4, the ECRAS contract.
Okay, so this one is one that you've also seen quite a bit about in the past. We have had a partnership with ECRAS Group for probably the last seven or eight years. They do quite a bit of data management work for us. They partner with us in looking at our strategic plan measures. Those are crafted using the ECRAS statistical model. Our evaluation system is based on it, as well as a lot of our internal intervention and improvement initiatives. So our contract was a three-year contract, and we are looking at just an amendment to extend it for a year under the exact same terms. You see the cost there, $67,040. That is already in the budget, as it has been for previous years, so this is just a standard extension of a partnership with a group that we have had a very, very strong relationship with. I will also say that part of this consulting contract is very, very valuable, and I say this having come from districts that we did not have this type of support. This is a group of experts that we can call, so if we see something in our data that we don't understand, or we don't necessarily see the reason, well, why is this trend happening? Will talk to us about how the MAP test is changing. They have a wealth of information across hundreds and hundreds of school districts in the country, and they can have their statisticians work with us, or they can have some of their knowledge reaching out to other districts. And so it's been a very productive partnership, and we're just looking to extend it with the exact same terms of service. This would be for approval to request to bring it forward to the board meeting for signature of the contract at the regular Board of Education meeting.
Any questions about ECRAS, the contract? No? One. We have one. We have one.
Just the sort of data that they collect, is there any other services that we are using where there's some crossover in what they're doing, or is this our main data analysis company?
This is the main data analysis company in terms of being holistic data analysis. So we have all of our assessment results, and what we also load in there is, we can really give them anything that we want to give them. What we have found useful to give them is any assessment results that are standard across the district, and we also load our demographic information, so we can pull subgroups. We can get, as granular as saying, in Leggie, 4th grade, we want to look at our gifted students and how they performed on this assessment versus all students. We can look at our lower-tier students, our higher-tier students, who's performing, who needs to improve, where do we see growth, where do we need more growth. It's actually very revealing for us especially, because looking at averages, which a lot of districts that don't have the ability to do this, they'll look at averages, they'll look at the big picture, and sometimes you have hidden pockets of students that need assistance that are hidden when you just look at averages. So, you know, some grade levels, we'll look and we'll see that our typically high-achieving students might be making expected growth, but our middle-level students need assistance to make their growth. And this is the type of data that they would work with to be able to help us to find that. At this point, it's really achievement data that we're looking at.
Sure, okay. Is there any other vendors that are doing the same thing that we're contracted with? I mean, I think this makes sense to do this, but what I'm looking for is if there's any crossover and other vendors that we don't need because they're the ones doing it.
The only one that I would say could have been a crossover was Hanover Research. If you recall, we did a study with our blended program, and that, because ECRAS Group also does program reviews and holistic studies for an additional cost. So for that program review, we actually made the choice not to ask ECRAS to do it. We made the choice to try Hanover because it was a much more inclusive review. However, they only do it as a six-month contract. We can't do it on an a la carte basis. We did have in front of us, it was a good review, it was great conclusions, very helpful. We had on our table at that point that we would have needed to sign a year contract for holistic services. That was the point at which we realized we were going to be looking at a change in leadership, and so we decided to hold off on bringing any recommendation back on that until we had a chance to just re-center around the vision of the district with new leadership. That would be something that could cross over, that program review side. In terms of the data analysis for education, I'm going to say that this is pretty much the gold standard. When we go out and talk to a Barrington or to a Naperville, they typically will have ECRAS. You go to a district that maybe is struggling a little bit more financially, or is a district that's not quite got that achievement level, and typically they say, oh, we wish we could have ECRAS. And so this is really the one that would be in front of us at this point.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one more out of curiosity, from a, I just reading through the clauses around, you know, their ownership of new and novel development work. From our own data standpoint, I'm assuming we retain ownership of what we provide and can, I mean, if we were to pull away from the relationship, we would also kind of bring our data with us? Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, and we would also pull with us anything, any studies or work around that data that we had already paid for, that were our product that we purchased. So our data would come back. That is a typical, more and more we see that clause, and it really has more to do with their R and D on their end to protect them. But yes, we own our data, we upload what we want, and it's full of the confidentiality clause that you can see in there, but that's really what that clause means. I've never actually, in all the contracts we do, it's in many of them, I've never actually come across any instance where I'd run up against what that thing is that they're referring to. I think it's really just a standard protection.
Okay.
All right, no more questions, and I recommend we move that to the board meeting and move on to 6.5, Vanguard Vision Competency-Based Education Pilot Update. Dr. Schlichter?
Okay, and while I'm introducing it, I'm going to have Mr. Grabner, Mr. Davidson, and Mrs. Kish, who's already kind of in the front, they're going to be walking forward. This is really exciting. We've been looking forward to this actually for quite a while. Mr. Davidson has all set. Mrs. Kish is going to just jump in if needed. So Vanguard Vision is our competency-based education pilot, and if you recall, we had a point last spring, early in the spring-winter time period, when we came to you and said, you know, we really want to try this, and we sort of got the nod of approval and said, yeah, let's go for it. This lines up completely with personalized learning, with where we want to go as an innovative district. And so we took a leap of faith, we applied, we got in as one of the first 10 pilot districts in the state, which is super exciting. Since then, we've been attending professional development, we've been making our plans, and we've spent the entire year working out, what are we going to do now that we're in? We're excited, but now we need to do it, so what are we going to do? So the way that we've approached it, and you're going to hear lots and lots of details from Mr. Grabner and Mr. Davidson, but essentially, we have four absolutely stellar teachers who raise their hands to work on this, and they are doing a ton of work in addition to their regular teaching assignment this year. Ms. Cass here is working through social studies, Ms. Johnson is working through English, then Mr. Grabner with math, and Mr. Davidson with science. Mrs. Holton is an instructional coach who's working with them as well, and then of course, Mrs. Kish is leading the group. Dr. Rowe and I have both been leading kind of in and out on some of the big-picture items. And I have to tell you that this team, because we've been collaborating with the other pilot groups, this team is building something absolutely special. We've been working with the state and saying, we want to make sure that if the state finds through these pilot schools that we are going to go towards a competency-based system, we believe this needs to be the one, because this is going to be incredibly successful for kids. We've had a great response from parents and kids, and we are going to be ready to roll in the fall. So this is our update to you on this incredibly exciting system that we are going to be seeing more about. So with that, I'm going to turn off my microphone and let Mr. Grabner and Mr. Davidson share with you what it's all about.
All right, I think we're on here. First of all, thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here. I wanted to throw out as well, Huntley, Ridgewood, and Round Lake, along with ISBE, are creating the guidelines and the definitions that are going to be used to push this out to other districts. So, you know, we've spent 16, almost 17 months now working on this. So we're excited to be here, but we're even more excited to get started in August, which is odd, because I really like my summers.
So what we'd like to talk to you about today, just a rundown of the overall program, what is competency, why are we interested in it, what will the student's day look like? How will it be different or the same? How will we track their progress? And a common term we keep using, what are the howls and why are they so special and integral in what we're doing?
So one of the very first things that we found out, and this is what really excited all of us, was in traditional education, the seat time is the constant and the learning is the variable. And with competency, that turns it around, and the learning is constant and the seat time is the variable. So the student is able to work at their own pace, but they still have to leave with a certain information, with a certain knowledge. So that's really exciting. So this is our definition of competency. It's a broad overarching concept. We're actually going to be using departmental competencies. They transfer across disciplines, so you would see a lot more work between science and math and social studies and English. And then I think one of the fun things for us is looking at inside and outside the classroom. We went to New Hampshire for training, and one of the nights, we drove into Boston, and we went on the Freedom Trail, and I got all kinds of information from Ms. Cassier about history that I had no idea about. When I came back, I was able to share that with other people. That's competency. I didn't have to go to a class to learn that, I had an opportunity to do it outside the class. So this is learning inside and outside the class.
So we want our students to be able to bring that back and show us that they know that without having to sit through necessarily a lecture or anything. Learning is everywhere, and they can show us that they're competent.
Yep. So we said that the competency is a broad overarching idea. So this is a, Ms. Kish spent hours making this. So we had to make sure we used it. So the canopy of the umbrella is the competency. All of the framework, the ribbing, those would be all the standards, the Illinois State standards that fill... State standards that, that fill up the competencies. And then the handle would actually be that transfer, that application of learning. So, and we'll hit more on this as we, as we go through the presentation.
So to just show you some of the things and the ideas we're talking about and how that the traditional class may be different, we're going to do something maybe a little bit different here. We're going to show you a little video that we put together, that we kind of, a couple clips here. Oh, no, Chris, you didn't give them access. He broke it.
So I think we'll, we'll skip it.
We can make it work.
So the video is actually from, from Hogwarts, and it, it shows Neville struggling to, to learn a spell. And it shows how all of his classmates are moving on, and he's still working at it. And, and at the end of the video, it shows how he has found that success. And it, and the whole idea is that he was working at his own pace. He was able to actually get the knowledge he needed. And, and so it was a, a kind of a, a fun little video to have up here. So sorry, we don't have that for you.
So why are we considering a different approach? As Mr. Grabner kind of said, we all want to focus on learning and not seat time. We want to focus on big skills to carry on, not small memorization pieces. We recognize that students often learn in different ways. And that's really what Vanguard Vision comes in. We want to personalize the learning, not just through competency, but through other avenues based around competency to help our students out. And we believe learning should be measured by proficiency in everything and not simply by taking the test and memorization and forgetting. And we're not alone.
Skip one.
Oops, let's skip one. Sorry.
Shouldn't be. So we're, we're actually one of six states that is not venturing into competency until now. So we're, we're really late to the ballgame. The East Coast, New Hampshire in particular, has been the, the leader. 10 years ago, their state made it mandatory that K through 12 is all competency-based education. So that's why we went out there for the training. So, you know, I think while we're late to the game, we've had the opportunity and we really appreciate all of you giving us the opportunity to have 16 months to learn and to, to develop what we think is going to be an incredible program for our, for our students.
So now we kind of get to, I think, the fun part, what we've developed and how this is actually going to work and look. And so what is Vanguard Vision? What is our program? As Dr. Schlichter said, that we have four core teachers, one instructional coach, and we have about 110 students that will be doing this next year with us. What we want to focus on is student ownership of the learning. No longer is it the teachers to dole out when we feel like it, but the students own the learning. It's theirs, they're involved, and we'll kind of explain how that's going to work. We also individualized approach. Not every student learns the same way. We want to individualize that, change it around a little bit. But we want, we still want to be based on the Illinois State standards, just like our traditional classes, our blended classes. That, that the curriculum itself is still there, it's just how they learn and taking ownership of their learning.
So the, the first few weeks of school. So as we, as we get our, our new freshmen, they really, they, they've been to some meetings, they've heard a little bit about competency-based education, but at this point, they're complete beginners. So we're going to take all of August, and we're going to have what we call Vanguard 101. Vanguard 101 is going to be us teaching them how to be Vanguard students. It's all of the training that, that they're going to need to learn how to own their own education, how to use the Flex Schedler, which we'll, we'll present to you here in a few minutes, because they'll actually have a chance to, to pick what classes they're going to go to at what times. So the 101 is going to be that little guide. Along with 101, we talked about inside and outside the classroom. We also would like to try to bring the community in to give the students an opportunity to see what professions are out there, what kind of interests do they have, and what, what field could they go into. So that'll start in 101, 201, 301, so sophomore year, junior year. We're going to try to start to get them into some internships where they can actually work in the public and, and get good, solid education to see if they truly want to go into something. I made a comment today, one of my things as a parent, I want my kids to graduate college in four years. I don't want to pay for a fifth year. It's too expensive. And at the rate at which students, college students change their major and then have to be in school for five years is alarming. If we can give them ideas and, and they can start to develop an understanding of what they want to do, hopefully we can reduce that, that amount of time in college. 401 is actually going to be a capstone. So they're actually going to have to, almost like a doctorate, defend their education. And that will be, that's something we have a lot of work to do on still, but the idea is out there, and, and it's kind of an exciting one to start to think about.
But 101 will definitely be integrating them, showing them how this new form of learning, like Mr. Grabner said, the Flex Schedler, the learning platform, which we hope to be motivous, which you guys, I think, are on the docket to talk about later, which is an excellent learning platform to use. And we're going to show them how to use all these tools in competency. So what will the typical day consist of? A typical day, there's going to be many different things going on depending on what the student needs, and we really want to fit what the student needs when they need it. So you can see all these different things up here can be provided by our Flex Schedler, including collaborative work, and we're really excited about the cross-curricular opportunities, the opportunities to take subjects and merge them together.
So one thing we've talked about for polynomials in Algebra II, the students are going to get to basically create a two-dimensional roller coaster. As they've done that, and they've come up with all the equations and, and fit everything together, then they're going to, going to be given a, a topography map from social studies, and they're going to have to design it into the topography. So it's, we're able to put subjects together, then they can write a report in English. We have stuff that we're going to do math to science. And so what we know is, as they see cross-curricular opportunities, they dig deeper in, they retain more, their education is that much better.
So we keep mentioning this Flex Schedler. I just want to quickly go over what their day is going to look like and what that Flex Schedler is. We got the idea from a, from Carver County Schools in Minnesota. Their middle schools use this a lot. And what it is, it allows us to be flexible within their day. So our students, all of our students, 110, will have a schedule similar to this. They will either have first hour as personalized learning time and sixth hour as an elective, or flip it, depending on about half, it'll be about half and half. Seventh and eighth, they'll both have their electives, and fifth hour will be their lunch. The middle blocks, notice, we don't have second, third, fourth hour anymore. They are with us, and we have the ability to give them what they need when they need it. So there's going to be a short time at the beginning, we call signup time, where they're going to be able to, we're going to present what is offered during the day, and they're going to, on their Chromebooks, sign up for a time. The Flex Schedler allows us to do that, and there's going to be different things offered. So Mr. Grabner could be offering linear equations. I could be offering vocabulary on ecosystems. And as a student, I get to select what I need when I need it. Now, there's some things that we know they all need, and so the Flex Schedler can force them at some point to take that. But other things, maybe if I'm a student, hey, Mr. Grabner, I really like you, and I'm really good at math, but I don't need linear equations, where I need to go see Ms. Cassir again because I did that lesson, I just didn't get it. I want to see it again, and that's what I need. Now, of course, that's, as we mentioned before, that we're not going to throw them into it day one. We're going to teach them how to use that, but eventually, they get to start taking some ownership. And if they're doing well and being successful, they get to continue that. If they're having some struggles, we bring them back, reteach them how to do it, and continue on. The other really cool part of this is that first or sixth hour, depending on what we have with them, it's kind of like a homeroom. We get to meet with each student during the week for about five minutes. Each student, about five a day or so, and talk to them, how's things going? What's your plan? What are your goals? All the things that we want them to be able to do in this and have that personal connection. And then the rest of that time for that personalized learning time, the students get to use their time wisely in the sense of, what do I need now? Do I need help in math? Do I need help writing in English? Do I need just time to work on what I'm working on? They get to help decide that and determine that, and that's part of taking ownership of their learning.
The program also allows us, if they're not being responsible, for us to choose what their schedule is going to be. So if somebody's avoiding math, and we know we can't do that, right? I would be able to say that you have to be in math during the B block. So, nice option there.
So as we get them going, how are we actually going to track their progress? How are we going to know they're on track? How are we going to know they're doing well?
So we, we've kind of changed some terminology. What is typically known as homework is really practice. You know, anytime we're getting, trying to, to become an expert at something, we've got to practice a lot. So you can see the checkpoints. The checkpoints are going to be formative assessments where a student can say, you know, I've, I've done all this practice, I'm ready to show you that I understand these standards. Once they've gone through all the checkpoints and they, and they've shown that they're proficient in the standards, then they're allowed to actually take a performance assessment, which is where their grade will come from. So the roller coaster would be one of those. So we also have a, a situation where the, the student, they have the opportunity to work at their own pace. That's a negotiated pace. You know, we have, you have to finish three years of math. So it's negotiated as long as you're going to be able to move through at a appropriate time, appropriate for the student, the parents, and the teacher. So it's negotiated between the three. We have real-time push-in, so we're really trying to meet the students where they are. We've gone through the, the standards and, and really taken out anything that isn't, for example, in Algebra I. If it's a pre-algebra topic, but it's, it's been done as a review in Algebra I, it's out. And so we'll give a pre-test, and anybody that needs it, then we'll push in materials to get them up to pace and to really fill the gaps. Then we also have ELOs. The, I, I had a nice album cover on that, but I figured not too many people would get it. So the ELO is, is just an opportunity for a student that's doing really well to move ahead and dive deeper into a subject, but it's also a time for a student that's struggling to get extra help. So that's, that's kind of the, the basics of, of the time.
So as we're going about doing this, we're, we're still maintaining the idea of competency and what that means and how the real world works. And so I'll show you a graphic here in a second, but if the real world worked the way our education system always works, then our, every job would be graded. And if a person went to flight school and they got an 80%, would you be okay flying with them? I think B's pretty good, right? Okay. So our individual here, they got eight out of 10 on their takeoffs, they're really good at that. Customer relation, compression, communication, they knock it out of the park. They're not very good at landing. We realize that, that's not realistic. You have to be able to land the plane. And so that's where we're coming from. You have to be proficient at everything. It's great that you are exemplary or way up on these, that doesn't allow you to not have this piece, because then that gives learning gaps, and then they have struggle at the next level, and the next level, and they, they are missing parts of their education. So how are we going to report on? We're no longer going to report on a percentage in letter grades. We're going to report on exemplary, proficient, not yet proficient, insufficient evidence. And the goal is to always be proficient, get up to proficient or exemplary, if you can go, but you have to be proficient. You have to have that knowledge and not get the, not have learning gaps. And we also want to note that it's performance-based, you have to apply it and do it, that's what the real world says, and that it's not time-specific. And what we mean by that, I think that gets, it's hard to understand what we mean by that. We look at it two ways. The first way I look at it, I teach photosynthesis in October. Student doesn't get it in October, but they get it in May. Shouldn't that be okay, that they understand it? Why should it be when I decide to teach it? So we want that to be okay, the learning is continuous. If you don't get it in October, but you get it in May, you got it. What does it matter when you got it?
And I had, I had two students I was working with after school yesterday. We had a quiz today, and when they left my room, I was actually sitting with our department chair, when they left, I looked at them and I said, they don't stand a chance. And by our traditional timeline, they had to take the quiz today. In competency-based education, I can look at them and just say, not yet. You don't have a strong enough understanding yet. Let's, let's dig deeper, let's, let's do a little more practice so that you are going to be successful. So it, it's an interesting little philosophy, and I, and I don't know that I had that perspective until we've dug so deep into this, but that was, that was an eye-opener yesterday. It's quite an eye-opener. So the howls, this is one of the exciting things for, for me personally. I like the howls. Habits of work and learning. To this point, academics and behaviors have been pushed into one grade. So you can have an A student that has just horrible habits, and they're able to hide those habits in that grade. You may have a C student that is just absolutely amazing. Prior to becoming a teacher, I hired about 70 people a year, and I have a student right now, I would hire him like that. I know he's going to be successful. He struggles on assessments. A college looking at traditional grading is going to look at that A student and go, yeah, we want that person. I'm saying a college wants to look at my C student, and they want that person. This is going to allow us to do that. We're taking the, the habits and the behaviors out of the academic grade, and that's actually going to go on the transcript. We're going to be able to tell colleges what kind of student they're getting. And so you can see the different pieces of the howls. These are actually tied into social, emotional, learning standards and 21st century skills.
We get the question a lot, how is this going to affect our students? Are they going to be segregated? Are they going to be outside? They're actually going to look very much like a normal high school student in their schedule. They're just going to have their four core classes together with us. They're going to have the same electives, the same opportunities to be with other students who aren't in the program in electives, have the same lunch with them, the same advisory, PE with them. They can be in any of the academies. Next year, we're going to put, their sophomore year, we'll have some opportunities for AP. We don't have honors, and, and that's scary to some people, but the honors are the exemplary. And this allows a student that is traditionally, man, I can't do honors, I can go hit honors level in some things that I'm good at, and now I get to push, and I'm not regulated, oh, I'm just a regular kid. I can be honors at some things, but I don't have to be at all things, and I don't have to do that. And so their overall high school experience will be pretty similar, except for their four core classes will be with us. And the last question we get is how do colleges view this? Where, Mr. Grabner already mentioned the transcripts, they love seeing the howls. We've talked to them, we've seen other states, they love seeing those. They have no problem admitting people by simply competency-based. They, for scholarships, we do need to turn it back into a GPA, and we do have a process to turn it back into a GPA for scholarships, but they love this idea about this. And it also, we think, from what we've been talking about to other schools, it prepares them for life beyond high school. So I'd like to open up to any questions, and again, thank you for allowing us to present. Questions?
Yeah. I mean, I think you hit on a couple of the obvious questions, so I thank you for anticipating those. Just curious if you can elaborate a little more on how do you get to that translated GPA you just referred to? And, you know, I guess, how does that work? And in practical terms, is there any ill effects from a college admittance or scholarship perspective that you could see?
So we, we went out to New Hampshire, the night we get to the conference, before the conference even started, we, we sat for three and a half hours. We finished at 11:30 at night, the four of us sitting there talking about grades, and we had it set. We knew exactly what we were doing. We met a gentleman who was a superintendent at one of the districts out there, and we sat with him for a couple hours, and we asked him about it, and he said, if I had anything to do over, I would take numbers out of grading. Our system was shot right there.
Straight through it all the way.
Three and a half hours wasted, but it, it was eye-opening. So, you know, colleges will look at proficiency, exemplary, that's not a problem for admittance. They, they love the howls, but scholarships, it has to go back to the GPA. One thing that, that we've said, in order to get past those checkmarks, if we put a number on it, they need to get at least 80% knowledge. 60% just leaves too many gaps. The nice thing there is, because we will constantly be revisiting ideas with different projects, different things we do, different applications, that we're pretty confident that we can fill those pieces back in. So proficiency, I mean, you're talking about a, a B, right? And so that's, you, you look at grades, we really, as long as everybody goes through and they're proficient, we shouldn't have anything under a B. So GPA, I don't think is going to be an issue. So GPA, I don't think is going to be an issue.
One way to think about that is, you know, typically, because I think sometimes when people look at a four-step rubric, you know, oh, there's a, one cat, there's four categories, it's like A, B, C, D. In this system, it's not, because the two categories of either not yet proficient or insufficient evidence aren't quote-unquote "a passing grade." So essentially, when you say it correlates, like, to be proficient, which everybody will be, it's a B. And then to get to exemplary, it's an A. Basically saying that doing C work or D work is not proficient. The way that now you can go all the way down and we get a passing grade, it's just not passing, it's not proficient.
So in that construct, you would be not passing if you weren't proficient?
Correct, and the reason that we're confident with that is because of the structure of the interventions that are possible, and the moving along in the timeline, and the supports. If this was a traditional system and we just said that, that would be concerning, because that would be tough for kids.
So in some ways, you're ABF?
A little bit, I guess that's a way to think about it, yeah. But again, it's that not yet proficient and insufficient evidence. I think you used a word earlier when you were presenting, and you emphasized it, I think on purpose, was the word "yet." Is we don't use the word "yet" very much in education. We either say, "Oh, you didn't do it, you don't know it, but we're moving on, so you don't have it." We don't usually say, "You don't have it yet." I actually saw one of our fifth-grade teachers at the beginning of the year had a huge bulletin board in her classroom that said "The Power of Yet," and it had all these phrases. "I don't, I don't understand addition yet. I don't do this yet." We don't teach our kids that. And so, that's sort of the concept, but yeah, to boil it down, if we have to convert it, it would be that A and B.
There's no F, because they won't even be allowed to take the assessment until we've seen that they're, that they're ready for it.
Fair.
So, you know, it also takes the idea of remediation, and I won't say it eliminates it, but it reduces it greatly, because again, we're making a professional assessment to say, "Okay, now you're ready. Now we know you're able to do the work you need to do, let's go ahead and do it."
Okay. Going back to your example, I think you were talking about a student that maybe hasn't quite mastered photosynthesis, so you don't have them take the proficiency on that. What do you do when you have a student that just keeps getting backed up, like, really stacked up on various things that they absolutely need to master before they can get to the next thing? And it really is just getting kind of overwhelming, yeah, overwhelming, or at this point, "Yet" is really far away. So, how do you handle that sort of situation?
One of the things is, as we mentioned, I know we keep talking about the ELOs, those homeroom times, those extra learning opportunities, the ability to say, "I understand this subject, I am going to focus more on this subject." We hope that helps, and we think it will help with a lot of it. But if math's a little bit different, it's a little bit more linear, it's hard to move on to the next thing without it, but in science, okay, you don't understand photosynthesis, now that's okay, you understand these. Maybe if you get another piece to the puzzle, you'll understand it from a different viewpoint. Because the only reason it's in this order is because I chose it to be in this order. Science doesn't, you know, history's the same thing, or social studies, same thing, English is the same thing. We choose the order as educators to try and, because it makes sense in our mind. A kid, it may be different. So, it's okay that they aren't getting everything, as long as they're getting something. So, I may have photosynthesis, for example, it may be part of a bigger thing, they may not understand this standard with photosynthesis, but they can understand the other parts. Awesome, we can use that. You're still gaining it, maybe you're not great here yet, maybe it takes some more knowledge, maybe it'll take, maybe it'll take something in Mr. Grabner's class, or somebody else that'll allow it to click.
So, in that case, that's where personalized learning really comes into play, and you craft something that works for that particular student.
Exactly.
To work around that stacking up.
Exactly, and that's part of the meeting with them individually every week. Hey, I noticed, you know, maybe, maybe they're having trouble with linear, I keep going linear regression, linear equations, I don't know whether they're going to get that.
Yeah, well, we all do.
And then, I, maybe, maybe they're in my homeroom, and I say, "Hey, you know, Mr. Grabner says you're having some trouble with this, let's make a plan of action. I'm going to give you ownership, I'm not going to say, 'Go do it,' I'm going to give you ownership, let's make a plan of action together, how are we going to do this?"
Okay.
The other piece, just to think about, because I know we always think about the finite time of a school year, is when we've talked to systems that have, that use this approach, even at the middle school level, I actually talked to an eighth-grade student up in Wisconsin, and she was able to, with precision, explain to me exactly where on the continuum of competency she was in each subject, and she actually could place herself there. And so, she was actually so far ahead, she was at a 10th grade level in her language arts, so she really didn't have to spend a lot of time on that, and she was able to devote time to the places where she was in the competencies that needed more support, like if it's that photosynthesis. We actually take a lot of steps towards that with our blended approach, if you think about it, because we do free up some of the student stays in parts of the week, but this is taking it one step further, because it's saying, if you're flying through, we don't make you stay in step and do all these things if you can just show us the proficiency. So, rather than kind of moving in one line forward along in a linear way, students are up here in one place, and here, and, you know, two steps forward, one step back, moving here. And again, the students really start, not in Vanguard 101, that we're not going to do it out of the gate, but the students really start to be able to design what they need and ask for what they need. That's part of those HOWs, is how they can advocate. So that's sort of the vision for down the road. We do anticipate it's going to take a little while for that to get up to speed, though.
The first period, sixth period, I think, you know, each of those would be homerooms for about half of our students. So we would each have approximately 15 students in each. So, we're meeting once a week for five minutes with each of those students, so three a day. So that takes up 15 out of our 47 minutes. Once I'm done with that meeting, you know, if I'm, if I'm working with him, mentoring him, and I'm done with him, I'm going to say, "Hey, you know, you've identified you're struggling with math, get over to Mr. Grabner now," or "Social Studies, get to Ms. Cassir, so you have 30 minutes of time that is blocked out for help." So that's going to be another piece of it, that we'll be able to really stay on top of them more, because we're having that mentor time with them.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, you're focusing... On the pilot. What's your vision for your 2, 3, 4 related to building the program? Let's say the pilot is extremely successful. How are you, what's your idea for the year after? I understand 201 for your freshmen.
Yeah. So, we have, we have four more teachers ready to go. Actually, we have three of the four right now, but they're ready to step in. So, you know, I think each subject is going to be a little different. We would be looking for, you know, next year's eighth graders to apply again, get another group in, and then...
So hopefully, you have 220 now?
Right, yeah. And we would continue to add four teachers and approximately the same number of students.
So we've committed to the parents, and we've had great attendance and partnership from our parents. So this class of students, these 110 students we've committed, will continue in this type of educational setting through their senior year. So we are continuing that. Our vision truly, if we have the success, and the demand like this year was just perfect, people saw that fit for their kids, that we would anticipate adding additional cohorts, so it wouldn't just be the four, it would be the eight, like you're saying. Many of the schools that use a competency system also completely shift instruction, the way that we're describing. In some states, that the entire state's competency-based, just to be very transparent, some states, the instruction looks the same, it's just that instead of grades based on tests, they give you grades based on competencies. That's not our vision, so we're really looking to revolutionize this. It is possible that we'll have cohorts or programs, almost like an academy structure, if you think about it, for students that say, "This is, I want in, this is for me, and I'm going to progress with it." And then we might still have a more traditional pathway for other students that are going to stay in that lane. But what we do anticipate, because we saw it with blended, we see it with the academies, is when we infuse this kind of instruction in a personalized environment, and it starts to spread through the school, it does improve instruction across the board. The standard gets raised for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a kind of a complex question, but you might catch on as I ask the question. So we've got AP classes, we offer premiums for grades in AP classes. What will the competency structure do to that? Would I benefit by sticking with the standard approach, AP class, get my premiums, and secure my scholarship, as opposed to participating in a competency, not getting those premiums, and therefore maybe being secondary to someone else?
So, we will still be able to offer AP classes, that won't change. But I think one of the things we looked at was weighted grades versus non-weighted grades. And in talking to the colleges, they don't see that, even with scholarships, that that's going to be an issue. It's a, it's a different scale, is all it is, and they deal with it all the time.
Do they have the ability in the competency program to push themselves to gain credit, AP credit, and therefore the discounted credits in college?
Yes, they would have, the goal is that they would have the standards that maybe a traditional class doesn't have, added on, and push to go to that exemplar, that deeper level knowledge of the standards that the traditional class does have, to prepare them for the test, basically. And we would know, I mean, the AP tests are aligned, I teach AP Biology right now, the AP tests are aligned to standards that we can easily slide into what we're doing and match them up. So that's what we've talked about. We haven't done it, because we haven't done it for this year, but that's the idea.
They would also have the opportunity to go out during their elective time.
If it's...
And take AP classes.
Like if it's AP Calc, we probably wouldn't offer AP Calc, that would be a whole separate one, because those standards are so different. So they could use that as an elective time, their junior, senior year, right?
The majority of your AP classes are electeds. So, outside of social studies, with human geography, that's one that's a freshman-level class, and US history, those are, and the social studies, we're going to look to be incorporating those, but everything else, pretty much, is in your elective spots, which they'll still be able to take in their other areas.
One last piece I just wanted to mention is that, and I think this is really exciting, is we don't have just one type of student in this. Even on the first parent night, I spoke to some parents, and their child has a 504, and they were describing, they said, "Does this mean you think he probably can't do this, because this, is this like for advanced students?" I said, "No, absolutely not. This could be the thing for him, it's really individual to the student." We've had parents, quite a few actually, that have said to us, "My child just doesn't fit in the box. He's been a C student all through middle school, he just, that box doesn't work for him, I think this could save him." And it doesn't mean he's a bad student, doesn't mean he's a great student, he's just kind of floating along the middle. And I think we have found that who's gravitated towards this has been really a great range of students. Students with IEPs, we've of course worked with the IEP team to make sure that their needs could be met, but we are really, really proud actually, that this is not an exclusive program. So, all the students that wanted to take it, with the exception of maybe a few where we work with the parents to make sure it was the right fit, they're in.
I've got a question.
Sure.
You mentioned New Hampshire earlier, that they've been doing this for 10 years or so. What has been their net result on their, I guess, quality of education and the quality of students that they've seen in those last 10 years? How did that differ from previous students?
We actually had conversations with a couple of superintendents about exactly that. The information they have is incredibly positive. They're also, they're still working on getting more information on, not just how those kids did in college, they have that now, but how they're doing beyond college. But they saw a drastic improvement across the board.
I think one of the things that really struck me that they talked about with their data was the, across the state, the reduction in dropping out of college. Their kids stayed in college more, they were able to complete that first year, they were able to go further, and that was one of the big things, along with increased GPAs and all that other stuff, but the fact that they could stay in and didn't get, "Oh, I'm in college now, I can't do it." That was one of the, I spent some time talking to an administrator about.
I think that goes back to ownership of learning.
So when it, when it came down, time for those college entrance exams, was their data reflected in those exams as well?
I don't know that we got into that too much.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't recall conversations on that right now.
Okay, because those exams, they just don't change, it's either ACT, SAT, right?
And part of our checkpoints will still be assessments that will help them prepare for those standardized testing. So we're not going to lose that piece of it, it's too important.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know, it's, I used the word overwhelming before. The whole presentation is somewhat overwhelming. This is incredible undertaking that I thank all of you, Shelley, and the four teachers who are doing this. It's phenomenal work to try and kind of pioneer this a bit. I know, I understand we're a little late to the party as a state, but it's great that you take it on. And, you know, the one thing I was thinking about is, again, math, in my brain is, you need this progression, but I don't know whoever came up with what progression was right, that helps you learn quicker or not. So I hope, I hope you guys, you know, find that way, because I understand science, you don't really need to build on as much one thing to the next, but the math kind of intrigues me how that's going to function, so we'll see how that goes. You know, the only thing, it's kind of parallels what Paul was saying, but, you know, you said New Hampshire. I'm always curious when somebody's trying something new or wants to, somebody else has been doing it. I mean, so their results are good enough to make everybody feel good that this is a pretty good pathway, from what you felt in others, and I don't know, New Hampshire's the sole thing to look at, but in your guys' research, there's enough here that says this is definitely a pathway that has some traction?
Yeah. New Hampshire isn't the only. It's, Ohio is huge.
The Iowa program. And so when we look at it, it's sort of, it's expanding our range of how we define successful, so I think by traditional measures, I'm not aware whether New Hampshire did any sort of longitudinal study themselves about these past 10 years versus the prior, but New Hampshire's results are absolutely not different than they were in comparison to other states, in terms of like lower, or sliding, or anything like that. I think the hugest benefit comes from that college persistence rate that they were talking about. So in these states, because there is that separation where, A, you can no longer hide that you don't have good habits of work and learning to sustain you later, because you're getting an A, and it just kind of hides, and B, you can't hide, just by working hard and doing your homework, you can't hide that you didn't master something. Those two things together are increasing that college success rate. So that's a metric that we're going to be intending to track really closely. In terms of college acceptance, success on college entrance exams, we absolutely see that trending positive for the states that are doing it.
Yeah, I think the best concept I see here is just the idea of not allowing somebody to go forward until they're proficient. I mean, that concept is just, you know, it's just not really what happens right now.
It's kind of scary, that's revolutionary in schools, but it is, yeah.
It absolutely is, and it's, you think about, you know, kid gets a CD, you know, he's just going to keep moving along, and he's never going to quite get it, is he? He really isn't. But when you make them be, show proficiency at something, and that they can actually do it to a level, it makes it worthwhile, and you're right, it doesn't have to be by tomorrow, for the next day, it can be a few days, weeks, months down the road, it's fine. So, it's all good stuff, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, 6.6, Motivus?
It's my last one, but it's related, so it's exciting stuff. Thank you for your patience, this is really, really exciting for us to talk about. You heard our team up here mention the Motivus system, and so in researching this, what we realized is that if we are trying to run and track and have students succeed in a competency-based system, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to try to jerry-rig our current gradebook so that it can track competencies, or how can we take Power School Learning, or how can we take Haiku and sort of shove the system into it? So we actually undertook a very extensive evaluation of probably four or five different systems, including our current system, Power School, to see what would best serve this pilot. And what we found was that we truly do need an additional system for this pilot to use. It is going, for the pilot, it's going to replace our current gradebook, which is running out of Power School, because it's not, I'm not going to say impossible, but it would take an extraordinary amount of work and... and kind of jamming the competencies into Power School, and then a lot of work to try to put the grades in in ways that make sense for competency. It's also going to replace our HAIKU, our Power School Learning, Learning Management System, because we wanted the system that was integrated with the competency-based reporting system so that we could have students all under that same umbrella, learning. The system is called Motivus, it's in use by some of the most forward-thinking competency-based districts across the country. In fact, the consultant that we've been working most closely with, she's actually out from the East Coast. She's helped many states get their systems up and running. And we are thankful to ISB that they took our advice and engaged her to assist some of our districts. And so, this is actually the system that she most often recommends. Her name is Rose Colby, she's just fantastic. And so, Motivus is a system that we are going to be requesting to get, go into a one-year contract to pilot, using it with this group. And it would, it would serve that dual purpose of the gradebook reporting as well as tracking the competencies and where the content would sit. So, these students would not be in, for the classes that are in competency pilot. For their other classes, they would still be in HAIKU in the Power School gradebook. But this is what they would be using in lieu of that for these competency classes. The one piece that's a little bit different than Power School, and they assure us it's under development, is there's not a parent portal in Motivus, so parents can't log into it separately. But there is the ability for the teachers, and they will be pushing out the, it's not grades, we have to stop saying that, but student progress at regular intervals to parents in report format. They've assured us that a portal is under development, and so our hopes, our hope is that that is completed soon, where parents can log in at will, but we'll also be pushing out those reports until that time. We view this, we view the entire pilot really as an opportunity for the entire district to move ahead on personalized learning. So, this is a perfect atmosphere to try this system, to see if it works. And if it works and we scale it, great. If it's not the right system, then we can go to some of the others that we have evaluated and try that. It's a lot more agile because it's this small pilot group. So, this is going to be our recommendation. There is a contract attached that we're going to recommend move forward to the full board for approval to use for one year, the Motivus system with our Vanguard Vision team.
Questions, Mike Fleck.
Couple of them. So, is this only for the students involved in Vanguard Vision?
Yes, we would be purchasing it just for them.
Okay, and this price is based on those participants?
Yep.
And did you say that they're working on a parent portal?
Mm-hmm, it is under development according to the company.
Did they give you an idea of when they thought they could launch that?
I do not have a target for that, no.
Do, does the price change once that portal is launched?
That's not a question that I have asked, I can ask it, my guess is the answer is no, but I can find out the answer to that.
I'd like to know that because I think, I think one of the things that people really like is the parent portal. I think it matters, some of them look at it daily, even weekly, and without this, I think it's going to be an issue.
Shelley, do you have any other information on that? Because I think you sat through some of those presentations too, right? They didn't, they did not give us the date. We asked specifically about it, but they didn't give it to us. But we have also been very upfront with our parents when we've had parent meetings with them. We have told them this, and so we said that we would be in communication about it as soon as we hear. So, we have let our parents know that.
Did the parents give the same concern that I did, or?
They didn't ask, they said, I mean, because the other thing we're going to tell them is use your students login, you know, and login and see actually where they are. But that we are going to be in communication until they get that figured out. But we have stress with Motivus, they have heard it from other users. That is a huge piece that they are missing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For the student logins, are they just going to use the same login then for both?
That, you know what, until we can get this passed and actually look at it, we can't get into the details of that yet.
Okay.
They've given us some little bits and pieces, but they're really reluctant to work with us until we make this official. Yeah.
How bad do you want the contract?
Right, right.
Any, from a pricing standpoint, I know this is capped at 125 max students. Any sense on the pricing if it were to go more full-scale and what that might look like?
Typically, companies will discount at a certain level of pricing. They have not given us that data yet, I can ask them. That was not part of the initial quote that we asked them for because we just wanted that 125. But I can check on that.
Any other questions?
Just from a technical geek perspective, what is this system? Is it, is it running on their servers, running on our servers, is it a cloud-based solution?
It's cloud-based. And I can, I can absolutely have Dr. Bzinski also respond to it, because he's been a part of the review as well of the systems. And so, for those specific technical questions, I can also have him share some responses with us. He's at Personalized Learning in San Francisco this evening.
Yeah, and is there any more detail they can provide on the $14,000 fixed cost? That seems relatively high for cloud-based software.
It is, and we've pushed on that price point repeatedly. And in fact, I will tell you that just recently, we've been pushing on a lot of our online vendors on setup costs, professional development costs. That's a one-time setup. We are not going to be automating the upload for these 125 students because it really doesn't make sense from Dr. Bzinski's perspective. So, we will be working with them more by sending files to get these students in. That is a setup fee, it's also a professional development fee for the teachers. And so, that's the one-time cost for that year. But again, I can have Dr. Bzinski comment a little bit more specifically on what the technical needs there are for that amount.
Any other questions?
No.
Do we feel comfortable bringing this to the next meeting?
I do.
Okay. Good, all right, then that's what we'll do. And we'll move to 6.7, Power IEP Contract, Ms. Lomber.
So, this school year, our Special Ed Committee has been looking at making a shift from our SEMS Tracker IEP software and has been researching, looking at a couple of different programs, actually a variety of different programs. And they had recently narrowed that down to two different companies and different programs that we were looking at when we were informed by SEMS Tracker's parent company frontline that they were discontinuing SEMS Tracker at the end of the school year. And thus, it sped along our process of when we were going to need to implement a change. And so, starting in July, we need to implement a new program. I think that it is one that will be very welcomed by our staff. We've heard a number of concerns, that's why we started to go out and look for new software program product. Actually, SEMS Tracker has gone down a few times on us this year and is currently down right now. So, what you have is a contract there for Power IEP, and we really feel that this will be user-friendly. It's the same information, it's just kind of cosmetically different. But it is something that staff who have looked at it are in favor of. And part of that contract would include two days of training for the end of this school year, as well as doing some additional training in the fall when they return and for new staff. So, it is something that we won't just kind of throw out and toss out as one more new thing for them there. But one of the things that we, not only is it for the IEPs, it's also for 504s. But we very much feel that it's going to really assist the department in making sure that we're writing accurate and compliant documents. And it's also able to be something that our administrators are able to pull reports, make sure that we are supporting the service delivery model and the needs of our students there. So, what's, before you right now is a contract for next year. Actually, it would be starting as soon as it was approved at the May board meeting so that we can start shifting over student documents and all of those kinds of things. And we do have IEPs that are written over the summer, meetings that do happen. So, again, we will be working with our tech department very closely. They've been in on a couple conference calls and have looked at the different software pieces that we were looking at to make sure that they were compatible. Power School, it is not the same company, it's the same name at the beginning. It does link and it can talk to Power IEP. The annual cost is $15,680, which is about $7,500 cheaper than that we're already paying. So, that is a plus, but not the reason that we are going with them. And this is all covered out of our grant. Any questions? Monica, Kevin, anything you want to add?
Any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Sorry, I'm going to drag us back to the previous topic. In the Motivus contract, it says we need a contract for Salesforce.com. So, this appears to be an add-on to the Salesforce.com product. Do we already have a license for that?
Yes, we do. Dr. Bzinski actually uses it for quite a few things. And actually, what he said is that he thinks this is a, and again, I'm going to speak for him because I spoke about it with him, but the details he's going to be better to explain. He said that this is actually attractive to him about this product because Salesforce.com is a platform that actually reaches out into many, many, many different areas, that if our district were to start utilizing Salesforce.com in an expanded manner, it might actually give us some possibilities to replace some of our other systems. That was his take.
That's how Salesforce.com gets you.
So, that was his take on it again, and we can have him take a stab at responding.
If Dr. Bzinski can let the board know
Sure.
the elements of the Salesforce contract, if we have to add on or get additional pricing from them in order to support this.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, no problem, all right. So, no other questions on 6.7? Then I'd recommend we move it to the board meeting and we move on to...
Actually, Bill, can I ask one question?
Oh, go ahead.
Would it be okay, no, we, before approval and all of that happens, just because of that tight timeframe, would it be okay if we started sending some of our student and staff documentation that needs to get uploaded into the system? Is the board okay with that at this time, or would you prefer us wait till the 18th? We're okay, either way.
I'd say it feels a little funny to send data ahead of a contract myself, so.
Sure.
If you sent test feeds, data structures, things like that, with test data in it, make sure they could build around that, they can still be productive in that two weeks.
All right, we'll move to Finance Committee.
Geez, are you done? Okay, Debbie, are you joking?
Says the guy who usually has the longest committee meeting.
Not true. Debbie, are you pinch hitting for Mark today?
I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, so, it's a, maybe, all right, okay. Let's start. 7.1, payables. We have our purchase orders and press checks and disbursements there. Any questions, concerns related to those three items? Okay, we will move those forward to the board for approval. 7.2 is our revenue and expenditure report. We get monthly. I don't, I don't have Mark here to just comment on this stuff, so that's okay. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, I've looked through it briefly. I don't see any major highlights, you know, again, we always talk about where we're at on our health insurance costs. If you look at our budget, our budget is 8.8 million. We're, you know, we're three months away from the end of the year. So, we're doing, we're, you know, 6.6 would be on target. So, we're, you know, about a half a million under that, so that's looking pretty good, and that's what he had said. Did notice, you know, this month is pretty high. And then, I don't know what April's looking like. Because April last year was really, really low, I mean, like a couple hundred thousand, way under what it normally is. So, I don't know what April's looking like this year.
Maybe we'll tell you that in just a minute.
All right, so you can take your time. So, anybody have any questions on this part of the?
I just, I don't know if we should be worried about tracking unfavorable in so many categories in the revenue side? Or is that pretty typical?
CPPRT, I wouldn't be that concerned, that's kind of hit or miss, we're going to be under. I'm pretty sure we're going to be under on that because they, he's got a little footnote that, that they, if you look at this little small notes, that the state has skimmed 100 million from that budget, from that section. So, I'm sure that will be under budget. Impact transition fees, we've known for a while that that's going to fall short for the year.
Oddly enough, we'll be talking about that later, huh?
Yes, we will. And then the other items are, I think, slightly under from that standpoint. So, I'm personally not concerned about those.
I just, you know, I'm kind of looking at the differences, not just the percentages. And I'm seeing, you add that up where I think we should be.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to Mark recently about the overall budget and how he felt where we're at. And he's, we're okay, revenue and expenditure-wise, we're in reasonable shape on all of it. So, you know, with a couple of months left. You know, tuition reimbursements at the bottom are just, it's a small budget item and it's because they're all done, I mean, pretty much. They've all been primarily submitted, so you don't have to worry about that, so. Debbie, I don't know if you've had a chance to find?
I only have the first two weeks, and they were both pretty high.
Yeah.
Right, consisted with March.
Okay, yeah, so they're just running a little higher and they're not, you know, they're going to be trend over in April. But like I said, year-to-date comparatively where we're at year-to-date, we're still ahead of, you know, favorable to budget. And, you know, even if it is somewhat over budget to last, we should still be okay. So, that's what I gain out of that, so. Any other questions on that?
No, but to Mr. Fleck's point about the number of items that are off-budget there, we may want to make a special note to kind of review those in the next tentative budget and see what's being planned there. We might have to just make a little more focused effort at the estimate of those for the 18, 19 budget.
I just think like those bottom three.
Yeah, I mean, they're not significant line items to begin with, but...
Well, but I think, I think traditionally those come in heavier at the end of the year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I was going to mention, if you just look at the comps prior year-to-date versus current, the comps are a little more friendly than they would appear compared to budget.
Right. And which goes to what I'm saying is, I think there's more of a push that these things come in toward the end of the year. And actually, a lot of them come in after the end of the year, but there end up, you have a full accrual done at the end that kind of gets them near their budget, so.
Okay.
Okay?
So, they're tracking red, but not really.
Okay.
Orange.
Not alarming.
They're tracking fuchsia.
Not alarmingly.
They're mauve.
Okay, so then we move on to 7.3, which is our fiscal reports and our monthly fiscal update. I'm looking through the list. You know, we get a couple audits with ISB going on, they seem like they're going perfectly fine, right? Yep, so that's fine. You know, Mark's got an amended budget coming to us, right, at the board meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been a double-check with him because I know he talked about one item. I mean, most of the items, I understand why he's doing it. The evidence-based funding model came through finalized, that's all great. There was one item that caught my eye and I have to go back and look at it, that we just know more information now than we did and it's a little bit better, you know. But I don't know that you amend that budget line item, I was looking at it just because, just because you know.
Well, just because you're amending it for the evidence-based funding doesn't mean you go in and touch every other element.
That, just because you know a little bit more, I guess I need to talk to him about that. Because then, then all of a sudden, everything looks like you came in a bunch because you're two months away from the end of the year.
Right.
Okay, so I'll talk to him about that. Right, you're talking about approaching year-end, so you're lining up the audit. We're under, Debbie, right, we're under contract for this year already for that, so we're fine there. Yep, yeah, I know he's working, he's worked on his legislation on the SB 1064. He's given me language to review, and it appears he's getting a little bit more momentum down there, getting Senator Menard and Althoff to sign on as chief co-sponsors. So, that's all good stuff, and, you know, based on the volume of email I get from Doug, the solar and all these contracts, we get a lot of stuff going on concerning that, lots of stuff, so. All right, so anybody else have any questions along those lines? So anybody else have any questions along those lines related to that? If not, then we just have our activity report. Any questions or concerns related to that?
Nope.
If not, we'll continue to move forward to seven dot four, Village of Huntley Transition Fees.
I am pinch hitting on that one for Mark.
You're in.
Mark is FBI...
I'm supposed to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all right. I'll get this down. Mark is at the IASBO conference. And so I told him that certainly I would be able to address that. In your packet, you've got a memo from the Huntley, Village of Huntley, related to transition fees. Also, you have a position or policy direction regarding transition fees written by the village manager's office. Transition fees are drying up because there's not much development in our Huntley boundaries. When those transition fees were made, they were an effective way in which we could capture funds to fund teachers that we needed in the classroom to take care of growth. Right now, we are in a quite different position. We are finding fewer students enrolling, thus we are looking at less teachers. So I've asked Dave Johnson, village manager, to join us so that he can answer any questions you might have, so.
Thank you, Dr. Hawke. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and just wanted to give a little handout, a little update of what's going on in the village and really thank the school district for the partnership that we have and my, it seems like, long time now. Some days longer than others. I might always seen this. And I just think it's important for the community to know that this partnership is strong and always has been. And that's really the foundation for when we started the transition fees. You know, Dr. Hawke was here when we started those back in the early 2000s. And the onslaught was amazing, right? I mean, it was things that we had never seen in any community. And, you know, even during the downturn in the economy, we still saw residential construction continuing. And over the last ten years, you know, based on our records, you know, we think it's been a little over one point two million dollars in transition fees going to the school district to offset those, the costs again. And, you know, what we handed out tonight is really, again, how we see things all tying together. Yes, we're talking about residential fees this evening, but it all ties together in a bigger picture in economic development and then in the end for that financial base for the school district. And, you know, the quality of life in this village, when we do our annual survey, you know, we're really clear from our standpoint, that's not just the village. We get that it's all taxing bodies, and a big part of it is this school district and the destination that you become. So, you know, you can see how the quality of life numbers have increased over the last seven years that we've done our survey to some of the highest levels we've seen. You know, we're proud that we've seen about four hundred and eleven million dollars in new private sector investment in our community in the last five years. And that's all residential, non-residential projects. And just to give you a little overview and some tracking that we've been doing on overall EAV with some of our surrounding neighbors. And, you know, you can see obviously, you know, it's no secret, eighty-four percent of our tax base is residential. You know, however, if you look at the industrial side of things, we're right up at the top, only chasing Crystal Lake. You know, the good news, in 2017, we saw over sixteen million dollars of new construction coming on the tax rolls. The next closest in the area was Elgonquin, at a little over five million. Obviously, an area where we're chasing and continue to chase, and who knows where the commercial and retail world goes, but that's an area where you see us competing, you know, with our neighboring communities. And that isn't as strong as we'd like to see it, but every day, right, we open the paper, log on, and see another retailer going by the wayside. However, going back to the idea of it all tying together, the single-family permits continue to be important for us to be able to tell those looking to invest in our community that this is a healthy community, that people are looking to move here. And I apologize for not numbering our presentation, but the single-family building permit page that we presented, you know, we issued twenty-five and twenty-five total new starts in 2017, zero this year. I will tell you that I've been around here since 1998. I know ninety-seven, maybe, we're in that twenty, thirty range. So just to give an idea. And during the heyday, as you all recall, we did over a thousand new starts a year, which was split about sixty, forty between Sun City and what we'd call the traditional areas of our community. So at this point, we've got what we would say two active residential developments. The remaining lots in Talomor, three hundred and forty-seven lots owned by Lennar. They have actively been looking to sell those lots. So we'll see. We do have some interest there. And then just out the field here, Cider Grove, the second phase of Cider Grove, there's a one hundred and forty-three lots. It's our understanding that there's been some interest shown in those lots by two home builders that we have a great deal of experience with. But as Dr. Hawke talked about in his presentation, the opening remarks, the bottom line is it's a different world today than it was in the mid-2000s. And we are obviously committed to the partnership that we've established with the district, but know that we are the only community, and I appreciate Mr. Altmeier recognizing this in his staff memo, that collected these transition fees or are still collecting them. And frankly, I will tell you that the late village manager and myself came to some of our neighboring communities during the high-growth times and said, let's all do this together. And it didn't happen. And we were, and we are proud to say that we were the first in this area to stand up and collect those from the development community. So with that being said, obviously, we'd like to continue to collect them, but I will tell you this. At the end of the day, the number that we're hearing all in on building permits called it about twenty thousand dollars. So when you get over that twenty thousand dollar number, you start getting, pushing yourself out of the market. And what we're looking at, it amazes me that Huntley now is considered far out in some of these home builders' eyes. So closer you get to Randall, the better off you are. So the infill development to the east has been really the primary focus of the big home builders here over the last three to five years. However, we know that we are a desirable place to build homes, and we'll hopefully continue to see some new development here in the future. But with that long-winded, I promise Adam it'd only be three minutes, but I guess I went over that. But, sorry, Adam. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just the term you just used, infill development, that just means a kind of one-off?
Yeah, so infill development, you know, is really smaller acreages. And even one of the larger builders that we've dealt with for the better part of twenty years has contacted us within the last two weeks and looking at fifty-acre parcels, which, I mean, that's, that's small compared to what we used to see.
Good.
And traditionally, we've been right in that hundred, you know, pushing two hundred acres. Obviously, the Talomors are different, but, you know, many of the developments we see out the window here were in that hundred to one sixty.
I've got a couple of questions, sort of comments. I agree that this is an issue, but I think there's other issues, and this is through the Illinois Real Estate Lawyers Association and some other places that I'm involved with. Special service area taxes are turning people off to moving to certain developments that have them because the taxes are so much higher, the tax rate is so much higher in those developments than, you know, across the street, for example, in another development. That's one. Impact fees, as you said, and I, the thing about this that, I'm sorry, you call them transition fees, so...
Impact fees we still get.
Yeah, okay. You know, that's, that is an issue. But I have heard, and I know this is the trend, but the Route Forty-seven interchange being a toll interchange and Randall Road not makes a big difference. And I don't think there's anything we can do about that. I just want to point out the fact that that is a real issue that's out there. And I don't know if any developers have addressed that with you guys on this. I've heard it that they're adding all costs in to this.
There's no doubt.
Not just for their development, but I mean, for the people that want to buy into there. So I just wanted to know if you have any comments on any of that.
You know, going back to the interchange, you know, the bottom line is that the toll way was clear from day one as to how they needed to recoup the investment that they made in it. And to your point, Mr. Fleck, it's, you know, tolling both ways. You know, my dad lives in Florida, and he complains about it every time he comes up that, you know, how do I pay this?
Well, it does keep some family members from visiting.
Right, so maybe that's sometimes not a bad thing. But, you know, we haven't heard too much of that. I think in today's world, obviously with the transponders, it's a little different than the cash boxes. I think if, we still have the cash boxes out there, probably a little different story. But, you know, the free flow, I will argue this, Randall over Route, or I'm going to say it this way, Route Forty-seven over Randall, time is money and sitting there wasting gas as you're sitting at stoplights every three minutes or every three, I should say about three hundred feet. You know, I would argue that the free-flow interchange at I-90 Route Forty-seven, though yes, costs a little bit to get on, from a time and environmental standpoint, I'd say that we're probably in a better spot there. The special service area comments, I think, are valid, you know, so the board knows, you know, we haven't issued special service area bonds probably since, well, since the mayor started driving around with the SSA sign slashed out, no SSAs in his car back in the early 2000s. So we haven't approved any new special service areas, but I do believe you have a valid point for those residents who live in special service areas. That certainly can be a challenge. You know, and there's so many factors here. To give you an idea, I was talking to a home builder a couple of weeks ago. This isn't just a Huntley problem. This is a Chicago metropolitan housing problem. Forty thousand new starts last year in the Houston market, forty thousand new starts. The number of new starts in the Chicago, entire Chicago market, six thousand. So this isn't just, in our opinion, a Huntley issue. This is unfortunately some of the things that you hear from your side of it, obviously going through the same financial reports and listen to the unfortunate challenges that our state faces. But I believe, though, that this community, we've risen above that fray. And it's due to the work that, you know, both bodies do, the school district and the village and our other partners.
Right. Just again, not that it's really relevant, germane dark discussion, but SSAs, the reason they exist is because they didn't have to pay the tap-in fees originally, right?
Yeah, you know, the, this is a great story. So when I first came here in 1998, you know, there was a big SSA vote on Wing Point, and Mayor Damer looked at me and said, you know, you better hope that this SSA ordinance passes or you can go right back to Crystal Lake. So, and that one four to three vote, I was happy that actually did pass because I didn't think I could go back to Crystal Lake at that time. You know, so really, you're right, Tony. What it was, it was paying for the infrastructure. This community has some infrastructure, obviously, expansions that needed to occur for the new development to take place. But as I understood it back in the late 90s, a wastewater treatment plant that was either going to be funded by the existing residents or new development. So that started in the water facilities. So you're absolutely right. I mean, that was the key.
Yeah, I mean, there was lesser upfront costs. Those houses were built for less with that, the idea you're paying as you're going...
I think what happened in some of those, though, is the developer, you know, the builder saw an opportunity to probably upsell some options because, imagine that, right? But I think that's probably what happened in some of those.
Yeah, okay. All right, like you said, it wasn't overly germane, but wanted to clarify. So go ahead.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think it's a, when you're, it's tangent, it's an adjacent issue, I think, when we talk about these type of things. Because it's, you know, it's viewed as a tax housing issue and actually an impediment to marketability of your house. Whether you truly paid less earlier or not, it's still something, politely said, developed, structured, and did, that has an impact. That when people think of cost and fees and how do we, you know, how is that burden distributed? That's a sore spot.
You are correct.
I'm going to look at this a little differently. This may be an unpopular point of view, but the motivation here, if I understand correctly, is to eliminate the transition fees so as to entice development.
I think it's to put us on a closer to even playing field. Let me give you an example.
Right, no, I understand, understand. The challenge I have is there's no market out there to acquire by giving them a discounted transition fee. You mentioned the stats of forty thousand new permits in Houston and only six in the whole Chicago area. I would think that if we were trying to move ahead and bring in development versus a competitive development, let's say that was going on just east of Randall Road, the argument to remove transition fees would be valid at that point because there's a win there to be had. There's really no win right now. There's no market to be gotten by reducing transition fees.
There is.
Significant enough, though?
I don't think that, you know, the example of looking at east of Randall in here is the valid comparison. Really what it is, is what you've got going on in Gilbert's, what you have going on in Hampshire, what you have going on Woodstock. Those are probably what I would say are competitors from a housing standpoint. And I will say that our fees, in fact, a community in the far northwest corner of McHenry County put out right before the holidays a press release that was pushing to build homes in their community. And at the very top of that was Huntley, thirty-five thousand dollars a home, of which a significant part of that was impact and transition fees. I mean, I'll be this way, at thirty-five thousand dollars a home, we'll likely not build another home here. And, you know, what we're trying to do here is, I think, put ourselves back on an even playing field with those surrounding communities. I will tell you that our impact fees as amended last year are still some of the highest around. And again, that is, I will tell you that the village board is pretty strong in this position, is it's not going to be a free ride either. You know, that's, and I appreciate your concern there. But I will tell you that we're locked in that. It's, you know, it's not looking to give anybody a free ride, but just basically to be out here to let the school district know that, you know, really, the world has changed and, you know, we will obviously do our best to continue to partner and bring in dollars to offset the costs of new development. But the transition fee, and Dr. Hawke hit on it, right? I mean, the transition fee was, again, we were the first and basically only...
It was a purpose to...
A specific purpose.
Right. The specific purpose was to offset the velocity of development. So if we're bringing a thousand new students a year to the school district, to be able to offset those costs of educating the student. The numbers that we provided you tonight are twenty-five last year and zero this year. So that velocity, that those numbers have really...
Zero is not a...
Right. So, so when, you know, I will tell you, when we say negotiate an annexation or a development agreement, and we say to a builder, look, you need to pay school transition fees to offset the costs of whether it's a twelve to eighteen-month period before that home is fully assessed, you know, they'll say, fine, so what are you going to trade for that? And really, from our standpoint, and again, just to give you an example where the world is, talking about whether or not a driveway apron is concrete or asphalt and putting those into a budget for these homes. So I don't want to come across that, from our standpoint, we're certainly... So I don't want to come across that, from our standpoint, we're certainly not desperate and running, and, you know, the world isn't going to fall apart without another home builder building a home here. But I do believe, going back to one of my comments, that a healthy community should have some new growth and new home building going on. And I think still having the transition fees out there would probably hamper our ability to continue down that path of, in the end, for all of us, is to increase that EAV. And the idea, right, is that the more rooftops then generate some additional non-residential EAV.
And when are you looking for a decision from the board on that?
From our village board or from the school board? You know, from our standpoint, you know, we're in some active discussions with home builders. So obviously, you know, our desire is to be on the same page as the school board.
Well, right, because how many, you guys actually, you set them for us.
Right.
There's no statutory requirement, right? Mr. Clegliano is very.
You're being State Farmish. You're being a good neighbor and this is your intent. Are you cool with that? And if you're not, we're still going to do it, but.
I would, we would certainly, again, going back to the partnership we've had, we'd like for your endorsement of that.
Yeah.
No, fair enough.
No, that's, and we appreciate you presenting it in that fashion. It's, it's.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, I think the perspective from a long-range planning standpoint is I think there's a real, when you see districts struggle, at least what I've seen in my own exposure, is that things really get hard when you start shrinking. And I think, kind of weird saying that in the context we've lived in over the last decade or so.
We agree.
But the whole idea from a school system and you start actually shrinking, that makes all the problems that you continue to have that much worse and even, you know, exponentially make them worse. So to kind of Don's point, there might not be a huge market out there, but we have to think about that might be a fate of Illinois and how do we react to that? So not sure how I entirely feel about it, but I think that's a real danger to think about in terms of longer time horizons. If you start losing population, you start losing your ability for programs and education and innovation and that type of thing.
Teachers start losing jobs, there's all kinds of negative ramifications of spiraling downward.
Now, I'll tell you, our board, you know, feels the same way, kind of wears with the badge of honor where we've been on this in terms of setting the standard. So it's been a little, it's been a struggle particularly for the mayor to come along. He's obviously been here through a lot of the growth. And, you know, to start dialing that back, his reaction all the time is, gee, when things were going really well, you didn't come in here and tell us you'd pay, you know, five times as much that you probably could have afforded it, but you didn't, did you? So now times are a little tougher. Now you want us to, you know, take that step back. But I will tell you this, I mean, you do have our commitment that if things heat up again.
Right.
And it's an issue for the school district. You have the commitment that we will always listen and talk and, you know, we have obviously good communication.
You have the commitment and a track record.
Exactly.
Track record of you, like you said, you guys were the only ones who stepped up when we asked everybody to do it. You're the only guys who came through and did it.
Yep.
I mean, I remember doing that. I mean, I remember, I mean, Brad, you were here then and we, you know, we were begging everybody around here. Lake in the Hills was responsible for fifty percent of the student population at that time. They didn't step up at all. Village of Huntley did, helped us out considerably in that respect. And again, I want to frame it as to what those transition fees were. And it was to be able to allow us to get teachers in classrooms sooner for the kids who were coming in there so, because you weren't getting property taxes. That issue doesn't exist right now, to, you know, at all, quite frankly. So personally, I have, I have no issue with the village coming to us with that kind of request because you guys have always shown that you're looking out for our back, even in your existing, the impact fees, not even just the transition fees, the impact fees are pretty substantial still.
Correct. Well, that's based on, again, going in, and the EAV was a long way of getting to the end of the story, but the bottom line is that the property, the value of property in Huntley is still strong.
Right.
And that's then reflected in the calculation for the impact fee, which then drives, you know, the impact fee higher, so.
Just a quick comment, having sat at the table with the village of Huntley and Carl Tomaso and Dave and the mayor, they definitely stepped forward when we needed them. Again, we're in a different situation, so I agree exactly with what Tony had to say.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you.
And I want to thank you for being patient and sticking through the meeting.
Oh, it's very.
Obviously, we had a lot of recognitions to go through and a lot of business before we came to this point, so thank you.
It's very interesting, so thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Dave. All right, seven dot five, something easy, good. Revenue contract. For Martin Elementary, art to remember, any issues concerns?
Yeah, I think we need to debate this for about twenty minutes.
I think that.
We're good.
That'll move forward to the board for approval. My committee is done. You're right, mister.
Talk about dividend distribution from the proceeds. HR committee, all right. First item is item eight dot one, HR updates. Mr. Zier.
Yeah, just some brief updates. We are full on getting ready for eighteen nineteen school year, doing some hiring for some open positions that we have as people retire or maybe leaving the district. So right now in the HR department, really getting ramped up to start orientations for new staff and to get ready for August to have everything staffed.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move to item eight dot two, which is the, I believe, annual renewal of the EAP contract. Anything to highlight?
Yeah, something to highlight this year, I worked with Advantage Behavior Health this time around to do a multi-year contract. So what you're looking at is a three-year contract here, which actually allowed us to decrease the annual price. We've been very happy with Advantage Behavior Health, has provided many great resources to our employees. And what you're seeing is a reduction of about one thousand one hundred and forty dollars per year for a total cost savings of three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars over a three-year period. We have no reason really other to look outside this organization. They have been very, very useful for our employees and has been a great partnership.
It has utilization kind of grown?
It has. We've seen that increase. They will provide a report to us, obviously, it's anonymous when folks go to this, but they do provide a report, but we have seen an increase in this. But also, I know administrators can speak to this, I can speak to this sometimes when we recommend this to employees, you know, many times those employees come back to us and, you know, thank us very much for putting this resource out there and allowing them an opportunity to speak with someone with any concerns or issues they may have going on in their life.
And it's a flat, flat fee regardless of usage, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
And beyond that feedback, is there that kind of person-by-person sporadic feedback? Is there, like, how do you gauge how good the service is beyond that?
Yeah, it would be the person-by-person feedback that we're getting and also, you know, just communicating with administrators who have, you know, individuals that they send over there and, you know, when it's especially impacting their work environment, they can see a change once those employees, you know, start attending.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anyone? If not, we'll take that forward to the board and close out the HR committee and hand it to.
Thank you.
Building and grounds.
Thank you. Nine dot one, O-N-M, excuse me, O-N-M updates. Mr. Kocik, anything to highlight in this report?
We are one piece of paperwork short of closing out the last large FY18 project at Rooftop Units in Chiller at Conley. Hopefully, I can get that off the list next month. We are very busy with evaluating RFPs this month in the O-N-M office, one being the solar project, which we have four interviews scheduled for Tuesday with providers of interest. And we're a goal of hopefully coming with some conclusion to make some kind of recommendation and present the proposals to the board in June. We're having a pre-construction meeting for the hot water heater on Thursday at Marlow. We're also going to have a pre-construction meeting on Thursday for commence scheduling the parking lot work the board had worked earlier tonight, so that'll be a very busy planning period ahead. In addition, on the second page, the very last item in May, we have a goal, Mr. Dean has been working very hard with a consultant, a security consultant, putting together a specification to consider replacement of our keyless entry system. It was on the budget plan for this fiscal year, but unfortunately it took the consultant a little longer to get it together. But with the project rolling out, projects rolling out the way they are, it's probably not a bad thing that it may be shuffling to the next fiscal year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee or?
Do I understand that the present keyless system no longer is supported by?
The controllers are obsolete. Service is, leaves to be desired and it's time. That was put in when we did the big development back in oh five.
Yeah, memo said six, yeah, but still, that's twelve years, eleven and a half years.
Technology aged by then, yes.
Any questions on any other items on the report? Okay, moving on to nine dot two, the ice melt bid, please.
Happily, we won't need it for a while, it would seem, but this time of year, we usually look at restocking our bagged ice melt. And as last year, the low bid is the same company, same product, we have no reason not to recommend it.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any objections with moving this forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that forward to the board meeting. Nine dot three, custodial services.
Yes, I want to thank the people who participated in this committee with me to evaluate these proposals we received in response to this RFP. Principal Litchfield from Heinemann and Principal McLaughlin from Martin and Mark Altmer, our CFO. As you can see in the following pages, there are a lot of numbers. We ask, when we issued this request for service prices in the past, we always ask for a lot of numbers to understand what the provider has really got in his price because even though we write things in specifications, not always do people read them. And this is a very important relationship we want to maintain. We put an RFP out instead of a formal bid this time with an evaluation rubric that listed thirty-one percent as price, as I mentioned to the board in prior months. If you look at page two, that's like the, that was the first page in the, several pages of numbers we asked from the providers, but you got to be careful what you're seeing on this page. And we took a base price for the service. We took an alternate price for a lot of three thousand hours that we typically consume, additional hours for additional service for supporting rentals and extracurricular activities. And we took an alternate proposal for considering cleaning our buses, sanitizing all high-touch surfaces in our buses for one hundred and seventy-four school days per year. I learned about this recently from some of my peers in other districts and discussion on some of our recent germ warfare, when we get concerns in the flu season, it sounded like a great idea. Doesn't look to be that big of an expense from the parties that I'm, party I'm going to recommend. And there's technology out there that it can be done sufficiently. I know it's a hundred and four buses in twelve hours, but it can be done. They promised they'll get it done. But I want to take your attention away from that page then and look at the next page. There's a, it's a tracking of all the documents we ask from the providers so we can understand their company, their past track record on turnover, their insurance mod ratings, their equipment information, what are they really giving us for the price? There is a bad habit of giving people, some contractors bring really old equipment that breaks down and then they don't support repairing it, so we want to make sure we're getting good equipment. We want to understand their quality control programs and a variety of other things. As you can see, that most vendors missed a few things on that. ABM, GSF missed only one. They promptly supported return of that. RJB, one of the higher prices, was the only one that provided a fairly complete proposal.
I'm sorry, I missed what you just said. After you said ABM and GSF missed only one, they, did they provide it later?
Yes, very promptly, they turned it around.
Okay, so we do have that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're fine. So we, and you'll see that Smith missed many things there. His numbers are real low on page one, but he missed several things. And there's a key point that he missed. He is not providing the chemical system that's called for, for our big four cleaning products, which is the most green product on the market today. It's being well-received around the industry and would do a really good job of cleaning and leave no chemical residue on the surface at all when it oxidizes and dries and goes way into the air. And he failed to want to support that, which is a big strike for him. If you go to the next page now, page four, you will see, this is an analysis, we get information on what their hourly rate they're going to pay is and what their gross salary for that particular job class is, you know, one project manager, one manager assistant, et cetera, across the page. Well, and sometimes vendors play games with those numbers. We asked that the minimum for the night custodian, which is the night housekeeper, which is the lowest paid position, be ten fifty as a minimum. And we got all kinds of numbers close there, but I think one party ignored us on that I will tell you that in, what I discovered when we issued to the RFP was that I put the standard that I've used in the past where I list the minimum staffing levels that we would expect. We expect them to meet our performance standard, yet we don't want them to think they can get it done with, below a certain threshold of manpower because people play games with that. They try to tell you they're going to do things they can't really physically do. And I missed the weekend staff support. We have twenty-nine man-hours per day on the weekends. We have a ten-hour lead in the morning, ten-hour lead in the afternoon, and we have a four- and five-hour person coming in the evening routinely because there's enough activity at Huntley High School to support that as a minimum. And we're usually throwing in extra hours to cover that in the winter months. But we expect the fieldhouse to be cleaned seven days a week and we need to support all the other events like the church that we have in the building and so forth. So it's our minimum and that wasn't included. However, if you'll look a couple pages later in there, I did ask for all-in unit prices, including all the benefits, et cetera, for each of the job classes. And so I was able by extrapolation to determine what the additional cost would be to add that additional manpower to the proposal, which is on page, oh, seven. And I had dialogue with each of the vendors to see if they concurred that the calculations were reasonable. And it's a reasonable extrapolation because those unit prices were also put in as part of the proposals. And you can see that with ABM and GSF, our calculations, my calculations and their numbers are very close. I don't know how Alpha can say that it's not going to cost anymore, and they said that because they were the highest bid, or proposal, I should say. And, and so you have that. Now, if you go back a couple pages, we get information on page five, which helps explain what's their budget for cleaning supplies and equipment and do they actually have a budget for repairing equipment? Because we've seen some issues over the years where equipment breaks down and they don't get it repaired for a long period of time and then performance is lacking and cleanliness doesn't get done well. And we want to see their other costs, what are they budgeting for training and health insurance, et cetera, as required by the ACA. And so we want information to understand all of that. And GCA had a, GSF, I should say, has a unique model where they actually, all their modeling of personnel is a full two thousand eighty hours employ. In other words, they're adding that in because they're putting that in as benefits, paid leave. So it's a little bit different model. I didn't, after dialogue with them, they do have, they do have paid leave covered for employees. for employees, which is a real concern now that the economy's getting very competitive and we need to, if we're going to get good help that's consistent and not have a tremendous turnover rate, which hurts performance, we have to see that, what they're doing with that. And it's something we wanted, we had a lot of questions in the interviews that we actually did with two of the vendors. And we got, if you go back then to the very last page, page eight, you will see that if you take their base proposal, the additional manpower numbers cost is calculated, the additional 3,000 man-hours, the alternate two for bus cleaning. The yellow highlighted column then is the total cost of the district for that. And just remember that this is an RFP and not a, not a formal bid. We wanted a more of a quality-based decision. And you can see that, but we, I'd said earlier that Smith, the committee evaluation we did, we filled out a little, the rubric based on the evaluation form in the RFP, and it was determined that Smith was not of interest, and we were looking to ABM and GSF. And they seemed to meet all the goals and could handle the project. Then, Mr. Altmeier and I went out and we visited ABM-supported facilities, GFF-supported facilities. I will tell you that ABM is a big company. It's a $5 billion company. And it's, it's, in the financial world, there's a term for it, and I apologize, Mr. Altmeier was conversing with us about it, that it's not one that's like an investment buy-and-dash type of an operation. They're invested in this kind of a service. It's not, it's not just like an investment firm. GSF is a different kind of a model. Both financially, very, very solid companies. Their services in the field were very comparable. The way that ABM covers staffing of absences with their personnel seemed a little better, just a smidge better on the completeness of the proposal for ABM. So at this point in time, we have no reason not to recommend ABM to be awarded that contract. I will remind you that that would be a minimum three-year contract. There's an option at the discretion of the board to renew for up to an additional seven years for a maximum term of 10 years for that contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you think Alpha was highest because of their insight into having had the contract? Were there elements of their bid that kind of suggested they needed to overcompensate for supplies or things like that?
They're, they're, they're a very low overhead type of an operation. They've had some, they've, they realized that they've, that they needed to improve to support us, and they're just not a big enough organization to immediately get all these things in place. I know, I know from talking to GSF, for example, their business model, like on the Orbio cleaning chemical process, it's a very good process. Many school districts of the suburbs, I've visited other school districts this spring and late winter that have been using this now for a while. It's a significant investment, and the new equipment's a significant investment. But these larger companies, they're looking at this as a long-term model. They're amortizing it over a longer period of time. Alpha can't do that.
So they have the ability to bid lower? It's not that Alpha bids high?
Kurt of GSF told me, listen, we're here, we're in it for 10 years, we're going to amortize it over the whole thing because we want, we've never lost a customer. It's just, they're different business models.
Doug, if you don't mind, could you talk about the fact that you put an offer to the principals about if you have employees that you really like from Alpha?
Oh, yeah, we really value the people we have. Many of the people on the staff that support our school district that are out there working very hard every night have been with us for a long time, some 10 years. There's actually some that have just returned that were with us like 15 years ago. It's, and we really, we really want to support them. And how this always works, and when we interview this company, they tell us the same thing. They may bring in some of their own managers because it's their business model, you know, quality control right at the front line. But the workers, they actually will, will interview all the workers and see if they're qualified to meet their standards, and they will have a conversation with us about any concerns that we've had, but if there's any such thing like that. But usually, the vast majority of the workforce is returned, returns to us. We sit there on June 30th, I've done this several times now, they turn in all the keys, we're there till midnight trading keys and proxy cards and all kinds of things, and the next morning, the new company management comes in and I'm handing them right back out. And they're virtually going back to the same people, in most cases.
Any additional questions from the board? I had one, and it's really tiny. So I was looking at this and I saw that ABM Education Services and the next company is Alpha Building Maintenance, which is also ABM. They're not related in any fashion, correct?
No, not at all. In fact, two years ago, I had someone in my office and they said, oh, this huge company, ABM. And I know Alpha Building Maintenance is not a very big company. We're, up until very recently, they just got Gary's School District, we were their biggest customer for several years. ABM is a $5 billion company. They're big.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because the letters were the same.
Yeah. Fascinating, yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions from the board? Any hesitation in moving this forward to the board then?
No, it's very thorough.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll echo Mr. Fleck's comment if you didn't hear it. Thank you for the thoroughness that you went through on putting this together and the whole committee for reviewing this with, and coming up with a recommendation.
I appreciate their help. I know it's, you know, busy time for principals and things and for them to chip in really help.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move that forward then. 9 dot four, change order for the Weather Guard Roofing.
These are my favorite kind of change orders, a deduct. By, just by happenstance, when we had the pre-construction meeting with Weather Guard Roofing about the Conley McCaveen projects, they had a brochure in their submittal file with all their building products, and with the certainty shingle we're getting on the project, and it said for a few dollars more, you can get a lifetime warranty, system warranty. And I was skeptical because I've had talks with forensic engineers and lawyers and shingle manufacturers, if you can imagine, shingles are on roofs in Florida where hurricanes come through. They're pretty good at finding ways out of their warranties. However, if it was a real legitimate bad run on the factory, a factory run, you might, you might get your warranty call. And the only thing, the only caveat was, for, it was nominal price, we would have to use the underlayment that certainty manufactures instead of the one we specified. Well, it turns out the one certainty requires costs a whole lot less. I talked to Wold about it because it just seemed too good to be true. Roger Schrofer at Wold said that the two, it's like comparing apples and oranges. He said that the certainty diamondback underlayment is the same manufacturing-type product that is the Wold standard. And the Wold standard is good enough for me. They're a very solid company, they've served us well. And so I had no reason to consider not doing this. I don't know if the board remembers, but back in the day, when we were going to start replacing roofs on buildings, I brought the idea forward that companies like Tremco, who was our consultant that worked up the spec, helped me work up the specs and the drawings, would do this for free as long as the project was built with some of their building materials. And in a, they're in it for the long haul, they're helping me with the management plan and surveillance on roofs, and it's a very, they're an expert in roofing. I mean, they have sealants too, but they're very good at roofing. I've worked with them for like 28 years. And they, they, I made an arrangement with them many years ago, and it carried on, and we have a little contract now that says that if their materials aren't used on the project, they get $5,000 as a fee for helping design, which is much less on the size of these projects than would a fee from regular design, construction, or process that we would do for other types of things. I've talked to Tremco about it very openly, and they said they're not interested in pursuing that fee. They want to be a partner with us for the long haul, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any objections with moving this reduction forward? All right, change order moved forward and legislative, Mr. Fleck?
Okay. Well, there's a lot going on, well, I don't know if there's a lot going on in Springfield, but they're in Springfield. And according to this report, there is a lot of bills that have gone through the House and the Senate. They're supposedly working on a budget, but according to this update, there hasn't been much movement on that. But the big things I want to highlight are three particular bills that did not pass. The Alliance didn't want these bills to pass. And just real quickly, if I can find them, HB 4789, provided that for each school year, school districts shall limit increases in school administrative costs to no more than the Consumer Price Index or 5%, whichever is less. That bill was defeated. House Bill 5572 provides that a school district may not refinance debt past the repayment period of the debt when issued, may not issue debt to be serviced over a period of greater than 20 years, and may not issue capital appreciation bonds. That was also defeated. If I'm, if I'm understanding that right, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did with our refi. And finally, the Senate Bill 3418 had to do with sharing superintendents over multiple districts. That didn't get defeated or passed, they just didn't have a vote on it. So that wouldn't affect us, but I thought it was an interesting thing. But there is, there is so many other bills that are still out there in committees and things moving forward, and of course, the things that some of our personnel are advancing and working on are working through. So that is the report that I have. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add?
I would just add that folks may have read in the paper that Mr. Jack Franks has invited members of McHenry County school districts to the table to discuss the non-binding referendum that was on the last ballot about a 10% reduction in levying by the school boards. That was originally slated for next Thursday, May 10th, but it looks like it's going to be rescheduled potentially for June. We're waiting to hear back on that, but just wanted to keep everybody aware that there's dialogue going on that. My stance has been that this is a populist opinion from Mr. Franks, as has been his MO, and that, of course, nobody would say no to getting their taxes reduced, but I think you only have to peel back one layer of the onion to realize that that's a foolhardy approach and that our students would definitely suffer, our district would definitely suffer by anything close to a 10% reduction as we already operate efficiently well below the state average. So, and we don't have the means by which we can play the shell game that Mr. Franks has done with the, with the county. So unless anybody else has any other comments to add to that?
I have a few. And again, I appreciate the sentiment also, we all would like tax relief. But, you know, first of all, school funding ought to be done through Springfield and not on the backs of the property taxpayers, but that hasn't worked out for decades. Mr. Franks was in Springfield, I don't remember any bills going through that provided any relief during that time. Also want to make it very clear, and it's, I think a lot of people know this, but some people kind of miss this point. The county board is a separate governmental body. It has no authority over a school district, it has no authority over a village, a township, a fire district, a library district. It is a separate fellow governmental body. I wouldn't tell the county board how to do their budget. I wouldn't tell the fire district how to do their budget. And I am personally offended that we're being told how to do ours. And if you're going to have the word out that an entire county is going to turn their backs on education funding as a whole, what do you think that's going to do to people that want to raise their kids in this county? They might look elsewhere to a county that's going to invest in their future. And yes, we do need property tax relief, we do need to be very efficient like this school district is and still turn out high-quality education like this school district does. But I'm just really, really offended by the fact that this is even an issue. And it is a populist issue, and I intend to oppose it for these reasons, and yet still find ways for everybody to find the best value in education. Thank you.
Okay. All right, item 10 dot 2, Board of Education Minutes. You have a number of minutes in front of you. Are you okay with moving that forward? Good? 10 dot 2 dot 2, closed session minutes. I mentioned earlier, when we adopted the agenda, that the regular meeting minutes of May 17th are actually April 17th, not May 17th, so we noted that. Any problem with moving that forward? Okay, all right, with that, I'll make a motion then to go into closed session at 9:21 PM for the items listed in the agenda.
Second.
Motion of the second for Mr. Fleck, although, roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Drizell?
Yes.
Mr. Guerin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Motion carries, we're in closed session.